I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the good life for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all. Please let the record show that we are all present. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. We do have one addition for tonight.
That's correct. We're going to be adding on as the last item for tonight, a resolution for moratorium on the issue of approvals of permits for off-premise advertising signs. The township is in the process of beginning amendments to its signed regulations and the moratorium will be in place for a period of six months, so we need that added on.
That would be added on as each?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Announcements and communications. Well, I'll start. I have a big announcement. Look at our big screens.
I think they're too small.
Are these not cool? This is really a step into the direction to really make the boardroom something in the 21st century. We're really pleased to have them and as time goes by, we're going to learn to use these things a little bit more than we know right now, but we're really anxious and really happy to have them in the room. So that being said, anyone else have anything? Anyone out there? Okay. Moving on to call the public. If anyone in the public would like to stand up to the microphone and talk about non-agenda related items, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Am I? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It's, uh, I can't hear myself, so. My name is Linda Hyattuck and I am from Senator Jim Runstedt's office. And I came out tonight just to meet the board and let you know how much we're looking forward, how much Jim is looking forward to serving the board and all of the constituents of Lyon Township and to let you know that we're available, looking forward to working with you. And any constituent, any problem, no matter how small it may seem, please feel free to give our office a call and we're looking forward to serving you over the next four years. And for anybody that has a pen handy, if they're interested, our phone number of our Lansing office is (517) 373-1758, but we're pretty easy to find. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mindy Fernandez. I work in Representative Kathy Crawford's office and we are, just had a staff changeover, so I'm brand new and so I want to come out and meet as many people as I can and make sure that you guys know that we are open and ready to help you guys in any way that we can. I've given most of you my card, but if you feel, you know, give us a call anytime. Our email is kathycrawford@mail.house.mish.gov. So anyways, I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mindy.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the reports. DDA?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. These are all new speakers and microphones too, so we're kind of working as we go along. The audience can't hear me. All right, I'm just going to have to get really close to it. How's that? All right, so I have but one update today and it's on the township website. So as you can see, we have lots of technology going on here and that includes some updates that we're making to our existing website. So I had previously provided the board a very aggressive timeframe with the hope that the site would be completed and ready to be presented this evening. However, we will not be doing that. What we found is that we had so many updates that needed to be made to the site. We submitted the link to all of our department heads and they all had an opportunity to take a look at it. And what we found is there was a lot of opportunities for us to change forms that had been a little outdated or needed to be a better resolution. We needed to upgrade some maps. We had a lot of content that was incomplete on the old site. That was part of the reason why we updated the site is because it was a little clunky and we couldn't update information. But I've received tremendous amount of feedback and that's a good thing. The challenge is keeping up with all the changes that need to be made. So with that, I'm revising our timeframe. What I'd like to do is be able to get the draft site to our boards and commissioners within the next week and a half and then get all of your feedback and then we'll be able to launch the site after your review at the March 4 meeting. So some of the things that we've had to do is, in addition to what I mentioned, is that the economic development and DDA pages need a complete revamp. And part of that is because effective January 1st, Public Act 57 went into effect and this is a transparency and TIF legislation that requires us to be more transparent. And so I had to revamp those entire pages. The good news is that's 90% done. We just have a few more items to add, but there were quite a few requirements that needed to be added and that's been completed. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. My allergies are catching up to me. So that would complete my report for this evening.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions for Tina?
I have one.
Go ahead.
All these changes you're making, are they easy enough to do?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. I will tell you, on the two days that the office was closed due to bad weather, I was actually at home on my laptop and I could not believe how quickly you can make those changes. And that means changing content, adding new forms, creating links. We now have a directory that, like for instance, we have a complete list of 312 businesses that have been added to a directory. It was a very straightforward process. It'll be very easy to add photographs. I've also collected some photos from the departments, including the fire department. Today, they provided us with updated images. So I'm feeling really good about the site and I think that once we get it completed, we'll be able to train some more people in the office, especially the department heads, so that they can log in at any time and be able to make up-to-date changes. But more importantly, we want to start to turn on some other features like e-notify, which will allow citizens to sign up to receive notifications about agendas or any important information like the closing of the office or holidays and all that type of information. So it's a very robust product. We have a lot of features. There's something like 40 features available, so we want to try to make use of every one of them.
Very good. Any others? All right, moving on to fire. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to just give you an update on a few things that I, it's my Groundhog Day coming back here, talking about the same thing. On a new front, we did get a grant from the state of Michigan for $2,350, somewhere in that ballpark, for blue card training, which is incident management. It's a 50-hour online training. It's about $400 per firefighter and we were given a grant, no obligation on our part other than to complete it. And so six firefighters are going, six firefighters are going through this 50-hour online training that will make them better prepared for command situations. Also, it seems like about a year ago where we were talking about the FEMA grant that we got for $122,000 and that was pretty exhaust removal system for both stations because we don't have, that's a very dangerous situation. So I'm glad to say that I just left the station and they were still there finishing up. They started the work today. It should be wrapping that up this week and they're doing both stations simultaneously, so that's going to make things a lot safer for our firefighters and all that. The other thing, the engine one, the big one that we're waiting for, so we sent three of our officers out there a couple of weeks ago to Wisconsin. Pierce flew them out to do an inspection. There were some things, as we expect always, to find some things that need to be fixed. And so we're going back out there, three officers are going back out there on February 18th for the final inspection. And that will be graphics, that will be all the changes that we recommended in our last visit. And they have told us between 10 and 14 days after our final inspection. So I'm thinking the end of February that we should have our engine, but no promises. I guess we'll see how that goes. And then finally, there was a little bit of confusion on, it showed last week that we had gone to Southfield for a high-rise apartment fire that we were going mutual aid. And just to clarify, I'm the team leader for the incident management team of Oakland County and right, really right out of leaving the station, there was a call for a high-rise fire in Southfield, so our incident management team was activated and it was myself and Deputy Chief Barry, who's also on the team, that responded with 13 other members from around the county to help accountability, firefighter safety on scene and then to find housing or shelter for displaced residents. There were about 95 out front. So we did not go to Southfield in case you heard that for a mutual aid. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Venus, anything? Sheriff's Department?
Good evening, everybody. Here over the past month, myself, John, and contractors for the carports, but just starting to get the ball rolling on that. We had to make a couple of slight changes just because of the layout of the property and the ground and we had less than come over who's going to do a site plan for us or work in form of all our ordinances and stuff. So there's just a little bit of extra we have to do just to make it right. Like I said before, there's only a couple of companies that are in Michigan that are willing to do these and the one company just does a basic carport like you would see over at Pendleton or over at Lake Angela and they don't last very long. They last for a while, but they start to look nasty and, you know, if they're not up kept right, they don't seem to last as long as what ours are going to last, just because of the way they're constructed. So hopefully here in the next couple of months, we'll have more information on that or more information to share with you once we get everything going and get a few more quotes and things of that nature. I know last week with the cold temperatures, you know, people were asking about warming centers or someplace people can go. I'm not aware of any people in the township that are homeless. I mean, that's not saying that there's not some scattered throughout somewhere in a park or in the woods or what have you. But if we ever do become aware of one, since we don't have really a place to put somebody for 24 hours if they need it, we have resources to tap into that we can have somebody transported to a warming shelter somewhere else. Yeah, a lot of the churches and stuff do that, so if anybody has a concern about that or sees somebody, get ahold of me and I'll make sure that they're taken care of. And I know things can happen, you know, with furnaces and things like that, so we might have somebody that is in that situation, but if they do need our assistance, that's something we can take care of.
And that being said, Melanie has been looking into the criteria for warming centers and what we need to do as a township to maybe have a warming center? And I'll bring that to you on the next few meetings. She's been looking into that and there's a few things you have to do and...
Yeah, it is a little more involved because you have to, first you have to have somebody to be with the people. They can't just be left by themselves. They have to be fed. There's things that you have to conform to if you're going to let people stay for 24 hours. If somebody was just coming in to get out of the cold or whatever, that's one thing that we can't, if you take somebody in on a day like last week, you certainly need to turn them out at night. We would be kind of responsible to do that, so.
Yeah, there's a little bit to it.
Yeah, there is. It's more than just letting somebody come in the door and sit. A lot of the churches know and they have all that ready. I mean, they have volunteers and things like that that make sure they're fed, make sure that they're not, you know, that they stay where they're supposed to and isn't alone out in the places that they're, that they shouldn't be. So, but like I said, if anybody sees anybody or knows of anything, get ahold of me or have them get ahold of me and we'll make sure that they're taken care of.
That's perfect. Thanks, Lieutenant. Moving on to the planning commission. Anything?
Yep. We had two meetings scheduled for the month of January. The first one was Monday, January 14th. And we had five public hearings. Two were with the Action Sports and Community Center. They had a special land use review and they also had a site plan review. The planning commission approved the special land use review and they still had some questions regarding their site plan review, which required our building official, Dave Harriman, to go out and do an actual site visit. So they tabled that and it'll be coming to the board as a package, so the two together. So it's not on your agenda tonight. Then we also had the maximum height of the senior housing text amendment and that was a motion to recommend to the township board. We also had marijuana establishments text amendment and that also was a motion to recommend to the township board. And our last public hearing was the Orchards of Lion rezoning on the four parcels, which is on our agenda tonight, and that was an approval to the township board. Under new business, we had Aspen Trail PD and Rick presented two plans. So he had worked out a new plan that the planning commission actually liked, so he is going to be going back to the drawing board because we did like it. And so we actually postponed any action on that so that he could bring the new plan that we favored more back to the planning commission and that'll eventually come. We had, we approved the DBAT Detroit Site Plan. That was that 10-mile road in Johns Road and that's, that's where they're going to turn the inside of the old Rite Aid into like a batting cage and like, almost not professional, but they're having professional instructors there. And we did work a few things out, but we approved that site plan. And then we also had the Blue Cross Blue Shield parking lot improvements and we also approved that. There actually needed more room for a parking, they needed more parking, so they presented a site plan for their parking lot and they approved that. And that was all that. We had, we had a gentleman come about a CrossFit gym proposal. It was just really for comments and we'll have to see if he brings anything back, but we had that. And then we had the election of officers and that was actually our meeting. And then our next meeting was of course the Monday night when Cider Mill Village was going to be presented to the public for conceptual. And that, due to bad weather, that got postponed and that, I think John might be making an announcement, that that's going to be rescheduled for this Wednesday at 7 o'clock at the Township Hall. So that will be the first meeting for that, for that with the planning commission. And that concludes my report.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the ZVA. Anything at the ZVA?
There was no January meeting and I do believe we have a meeting in February.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Park Advisory Board. Patrick, anything from the Park Advisory Board?
I don't have anything on my end.
Nothing? Robert, nothing going on out there?
I'll take, if there's nothing going on. Meeting was filed on time and we're just going to be working through that. One of our next things is trying to meet with the veterans group to discuss a memorial design and location.
Perfect. That sounds great. Thanks, Robert. All right, DPW. Bob, anything happening in the DPW?
Yep, got a couple of things, John. Probably the number one thing that occurred over the last couple of weeks was the cold weather. And probably most people don't realize how tough it is to run a water system in cold weather because the wells where they turn on way over on 10-mile are dependent on what's happening at the water tower at the fire hall. So it's imperative we keep good heat at the tower because it sends a signal through the air, it turns wells on and it keeps our system under pressure. And we accomplished that with heads up. Highland treatment and myself checked it constantly throughout the couple of days, in fact, all week, and we had very good luck. And besides that, we had a broken fire hydrant that got repaired down on Industrial Drive and, let's see, and we're getting fewer and fewer calls on the water. It's getting much, much better and we're very happy with that. And so we're in touch with our residents and we respond whenever they call. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. That wraps up our reports. We're going to move on to unfinished business tonight and our first is Artesian Pioneer Water Discussion. Ed was not able to make it here tonight, but we had some conversations, Bob and I, about the progress of the treatment plant and I think Bob's going to fill you in a little bit.
Yep, I'd love to do that, John. We're getting there, guys. This is not unlike building a home. The walls are up, the floors are in, the ceiling is on, but now we're starting to micromanage it, okay? With that said, all the pumps have been set. We're now finishing up electrical. The painting has been completed and this week we're installing pneumatic airlines that will open and close valves throughout the plant. We'll be tying in the generator by the end of the week and things are getting much, much closer. I still think we're about a month out, but all in all, we're getting very close to delivering some really nice water with a very nice plant. There'll probably be two to three weeks of schooling on the new plant so everybody knows exactly how to operate it. And with that, the Department of Environmental Quality will be invited to those demonstrations so they all have input on it also. And we won't actually turn it on till we have an okay from them. Any questions? I know you guys did a tour with Ed, so.
Yep. It looks fantastic.
Yeah, it's going to be just wonderful.
We got some new pictures today too, John and Tina put them up on the monitor today.
Yep, a lot of those are of the tower and the tower's probably March to April.
Yeah, Tina maybe can show these new pictures of today.
Do you want me to do now?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Just quickly and everybody can see it because you guys can see it over here, but they're, they're the ones we just got today from Ed. They're pretty impressive.
Give me a second.
Bob, any updates on the approvals on the other plant, the South Hill?
No. We're working, I mean, we've had discussions with the DEQ, Chris Donaldson, a few other people from the DEQ, they say they are reviewing it. They did not give us a finalized date or time, but they said it is under review, so.
Next one's down from the...
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we have some good answers.
I think so.
And I'd like to add something to that is we have gotten some newly phone conversations with DEQ and thanks to Senator Runstedt and Kathy Crawford's office, they both have made some phone calls to the DEQ and it seems to have moved them a little bit forward. And we have been promised that the permit for South Hill, we should receive that sometime this week.
Oh, good.
So thanks to them. That was, it was very nice of them.
Tina's showing some pictures of his inside with the painting done now and...
She's trying.
Because that is amazing.
Doesn't that look nice?
There's actually, there's actually four of them, filters in that building. The two filters you seen on the left are also on the right. I mean, there's four separated.
Those are the iron removal filters that will literally remove about 98% of all the iron that's in the water at the source, so that these problems of yellow water are going to go away. And we're so excited about that.
I think I was impressed with the redundancy that we built in, so even when there's maintenance or an emergency or failure with one particular part of the plant, there is, you know, a backup or two backups.
Redundancy is a word that the DEQ loves to use.
Sure.
Yeah. And we like it too because it gives you backup.
Right. And I mean, some of the problems we experience now are because we, in the old system, didn't have these.
Exactly right.
And that's one of the things, rather than, you know, trying to fix what we had.
Yeah.
It was really not an ideal system.
I think one of the key features of our new treatment plant is the aeration system. I think that is the key feature of the plant. And we never had that before.
Right.
So the filters were doing all the work.
Oxidation of the iron and the catching of the particles in those filters is going to produce a really, really nice quality water for our residents. And it's a very simple process if you have it in place and we will, so.
Yeah, it's really awesome to see. You guys seen it, it's pretty interesting. All right, so I think we're all set with that. Let's move on to new business. Consideration approval of Novella's Pizza LLC to obtain a tavern liquor license from Lyon Township.
So while I'm setting this up, can I run over my number?
Yeah, let's hear what you got to say, Tina.
You might, you might have to launch it from here, but we'll start off from the mic. So Novella's Pizza has submitted for the second time an application for a tavern license. And I'm going to give a little bit of background on this before we move forward with their presentation. So a tavern license, like a Class C liquor license, is tied to the township quota, which is issued by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. At this time, the township has one remaining license. In 2010, the census had the population for the township set at 14,525 persons. In 2020, a new census will be conducted. The results should be issued by 2021. Lyon Township is expected to show an increase of over 5,000 persons, which should set the population at just over 20,000. One Class A or tavern license is issued per 1,500 residents. An increase in population over 5,000 could result in the Michigan Liquor Control issuing three to four new liquor licenses for our community quota in 2021. The applicant has submitted responses to the liquor license application questionnaire for the township board's consideration of the reason, of the reasonability of the applicant's proposal. In making its determination pursuant to subsection F of the ordinance, the township board shall consider whether the applicant's proposal is reasonable when measured against the answers provided in that questionnaire. At the initial meeting before the township board, they can consider the application for the liquor license. The board shall generally take one of the following four steps. Ask the applicant to proceed with the submitted plan so that more detailed or a complete proposal can be heard by the township board at a later date. If the applicant has not submitted all information required for initial action, action on the application shall be postponed for a period not to exceed 60 days. The township board could also recommend to the State Liquor Control Commission approval of the application or could reject the application and state the reason for such denial. It's important to note that if the township were to issue its last license, the only opportunity for a future restaurant owner to secure a license prior to 2021 would be by purchasing an Oakland County-based license from the business owner that has their license currently in escrow with the liquor commission or by applying for a redevelopment license. Redevelopment licenses are only available once a local government unit has issued its last license and can only be issued to a business located in the downtown development area. It's important to note that an applicant would need to meet a number of requirements to be eligible for that type of license. The applicant must be a business engaged in dining, entertainment, or recreation and open to the public, have a seating capacity of at least 25 people, have spent at least $75,000 for the rehabilitation or restoration of a building where the license will be housed over a period of the preceding five years or a commitment for a capital investment of at least $75,000 that would be spent before the issuance of a license. And to show that the amount of the private and public investment in real and personal property in the district above was at least $200,000 in the period covering the preceding five years. In addition, an applicant would need to demonstrate that they have attempted to purchase a readily available escrow or quota on-premise license within the municipality and they would also pay $20,000 for that license. Taking all that in consideration, the applicant is prepared to give a presentation to the township board this evening regarding their liquor license application and to answer any questions. any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tina? Okay. Come on up. How you doing?
Great, how you doing?
Good.
We can hear you. Can you hear me? I think I'll be the guinea pig today for the PowerPoint. Some of our pies. If you've not yet been in, my name is Brandon, Brandon Davis. I am the owner of Novella's Pizza. I live in New Hudson as well as operate the business there. You see a couple of our pies here for our, for the first page. We have our Novella Supreme on the right, our Sausage and Peppers, and our Artisan Garden on the left-hand side. So we've been open now for almost a year. It'll be a year and two weeks. And we've been excited this year. It's been a successful year. We've been growing month over month since the day that we opened. A few things that we have been going on with Novella's Pizza is if you don't know, first of all, we recently won the Michigan Restaurant Association 2018 Pizza Challenge. And if you did not know, that is a big deal. Pizzerias from around the state come in and compete. And we cooked our food in front of an audience. And then there are a panel of judges in the back that would rate your pizza based upon a pizza score, international pizza scorecard. And with that being said, some of these pizzerias that were in there were a big deal. And we were pretty intimidated. We were excited for the opportunity to be there, and we won first place with our fig and pig. And so with that being said, now that we won that, we are, the Michigan Restaurant Association is flying us to Las Vegas in a month to compete in the international pizza competition. What's cool about that is if you do win that with the pizza that you have, it's hard to say with a straight face, but you literally have the best pizza in the world. There's roughly about 150, 160 pizzerias that compete from all over the world. And there are 30 that are competing in the non-traditional division, which is what we are in because our pie that we chose did not have any red sauce. So if we win the non-traditional, then you go to compete against the traditional. And then if you win that, or wins, every division competes for a pizza maker of the year award with a mystery box. So the International Pizza Convention in the pizza world is a big deal. It is the largest pizza convention in the world. So we're super excited about that. And since that's happened, our fig and pig sales have taken over as one or two in the restaurant. It's an excellent pie. But we went with that pie because it kind of shows who we are as a restaurant, who we are as people. We're not your normal, typical pizza joint. We do have an excellent pepperoni pie or a supreme, but we are a little more outside the box when it comes to pizza, using the highest ingredients, quality ingredients possible. Besides that, we are also excited. We were just invited to take place in the Pizza Throwdown Detroit, which happens this summer in Eastern Market. We're the only place that's not in Detroit or the east side that's been invited to participate in this. But last year, it had over 2,000 people come to it. It's in Shed Five of the Eastern Market, and it's a pretty big deal. So we're excited about that. That's not a competition. That's more or less a pizza showcase for what Detroit has to offer. So we are really excited to be invited to that. But that's also a pretty big deal. So after being open for a year, there's one opportunity that we need that's glaring for us in the business, which is the reason why I'm here, is our liquor license. We have a beautiful restaurant. It's an open kitchen. People are always commenting on the food, on the staff, on the cleanliness of the restaurant. But it's hard to generate that dinner sales dine-in when there's no beer or wine. We do get phone calls on a daily basis. The lost sales that we've lost over this last year is hard to quantify, but it's been pretty substantial. And although we've been here for a year and, so to speak, we're successful this first year and we're still growing, we do need this license to take us to the next level and to expedite our growth process. So that's the reason why I am here today. And if we do get this license, part of our goal within supporting the community is to buy local. So we already buy our products local. All of our companies that we source our product, besides our cheese, is done local. Our meat's local. We want to continue with beer and wine as well as as locals we possibly can with the highest quality products we can possibly get. As I said before, I know, you know, a concern for the township is losing liquor licenses, you know, and can a business sustain it? Will it go somewhere else? I don't know the better way to show you that we're committed to this besides the fact that we live here and we're taking a risk in opening this in Lyon Township. We opened in Lyon Township because, again, we do live here. I was driving minimum 30 minutes to work for six years. I enjoy being close to home. I like having a business where my friends and my family can stop in and see me whenever they'd like to. I have two little girls. I love when they come in on Thursdays before dance class or if my wife picks them up from daycare. And I've been working a lot the last week and they just come in. I come out to the car, I give them both a kiss and say hello. You've got to give them a cookie and then I go back to work. That's why I work here in the business. And so the fact that we've been open for a year now and we're continuing to grow, you know, I think shows a good example that we're here. You know, we're here, we're local, and we don't plan on going anywhere. And also, we think that, you know, with the growth and development of the downtown district, we really believe having more action downtown in that epicenter of that Grand River Road for a growth stop is going to bring more business, is going to bring more action, people are going to want to go there. We need more in this area, I think, for us to grow. We have a saying at Novella's Pizza. It started off, you know, before we opened, we had all these great plans of we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Culture is very important to us. We were writing culture before we even had a business plan. We had to pump the brakes on that. But one thing that we've said since the beginning that we'll never change is pizza with character. So if you follow us on Instagram or Facebook, you see every post that we have has hashtag pizza with character, which I was surprised that we were the first person to do that. So it's not a ton of posts, maybe 300 or so. But pizza with character, what that means to us is, first of all, the food, as you saw in the first, the first frame, everything in our restaurant is scratch made. We get the best products we possibly can get. If I would not feed it to my kids, it's not going to be on the menu. Our pork that we use for our sausage is all natural. Meatballs is the same. Our cheese, all natural, whole milk cheese. There's no sugar added. It's just really good product. And when the food comes up, because of that, on a pizza, which is intentional, you're going to see some bubbles. You're going to see some char. You're going to see the pepperonis crisp up in a little pool because that's character and that's better quality. The second half of that is our commitment to the community. So pizza with character for us, which I'll hit on this more in a minute, but that means that minimum once a quarter, we've committed to doing some kind of charity work in the community. It's been, since you've been open, it's been more than once a quarter, but it's really important to us to give back. And I'll kind of get into what that means here in a moment, but that's super important to our business, to our family, our friends, and people that we, you know, live around. So if any time you have any questions, you can, of course, subject. I can talk. Okay. Like I said before, we've been growing since day one, which is exciting. You know, we monitor it closely as you need to when you own a business. It is hard to quantify the lost sales, but I can tell you, we get phone calls daily for people who want to come in and get a beer or wine with dinner. We have people, which I don't blame them, will come in, order, they'll go next door, have a beer. I don't blame them. I would do the same thing. And then we'll bring the food to them. We have people who come in, they will come in our restaurant, order our food, and they'll go next door and drink while they eat our food in a different restaurant. We've catered parties to other restaurants before that do serve alcohol, and the restaurant owners have been cool about it. But they came to us first and said, hey, can we host a party there? Do you, absolutely. Do you serve alcohol? We do not. Okay, well, unfortunately, that's important to that party. So we do lose out on that quite often, which is frustrating. And we think that it's really important for us to hit on that. Although our catering, you know, and delivery services is great, and we're very happy with that, we don't want to take away from that. But if it's a Friday night or a Saturday and you want to get a good pie or get a good pizza and you want to have a beer with it, you're leaving. You're going somewhere else for that. So we want to keep that here. These are a few pictures of our pizza with character, things that we have going on. And just the pictures in the middle was the Dawn Together Charity that we did for the teacher from Dulson. That was a humongous event. The whole function raised over $11,000, and that was, that was nuts. We were over two hours for pizza that night.
I know. I tried to order one. I couldn't.
Yeah, you know, people waited.
Was a two-hour wait.
For 30 minutes to order a pizza, and then they was, we'd tell them it's going to be two, two hours, you know? So now you've got two and a half hours, which Tucker's was great. People were over there drinking, hanging out, waiting. People didn't care. They waited. This community is awesome. It was an unbelievable event, but we were really privileged to be a part of that. The top left is my main guy, Joe, throwing dough in the air. The little kids you see are Girl Scouts. We have Girl Scouts pretty much every weekend for they earn a badge. We do a kitchen tour. We make our own pizza. Then they get to decorate their own cupcakes, and the kids love it. The top right is an event we did with Courageous Kids, which was, which was a success. They're in our building, Courageous Kids, and they have a lot of fun with them. The bottom right are a couple of Girl Scouts that could not wait for their cupcakes. And the bottom left is the South Lyon High School basketball team. Now, we want to make sure you know, this is not why we feel like we deserve a liquor license. This is just who we are. It kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing, who we are. We have a discount with the South Lyon Education Association for 10% off if you're in South Lyon School District. All the teachers got a card for that. The school supply drive we did, the Eve and the Dee, Christmas Eve, us and a few people went down. We did a drive at the restaurant. We were accepting donations for free food, for hats, gloves. And we went out to Eastern Market that morning with all of our products. There's a lot of people there. They put together hot meals for homeless people. And we would, in my truck, me and another people from the restaurant, would go around and we'd seek out homeless people and we'd give them some blankets, coats, and a warm meal, which was a really cool event to do and be a part of. We know this is a big deal for Lyon Township, this liquor license. We do take it very serious. Thank you, Tina. You know this, but we've already been approved for our SDM license, which is our carryout license. So we know the state will go through the approval process again with us. We have spoken with them. Our stuff is ready to go. They said, come here and immediately send all your stuff to us. The fingerprints are done. We're ready. It should be a relatively quick approval process since we've already been approved for this. And being a Lyon Township resident, we really just believe that this area, we'd like to see more. And there's, you know, two restaurants close to us that do serve alcohol, and I think a third would be, would be great for that general area. Successful businesses bring more businesses to the area. And I think we need it. And the next couple of things, I'm not going to really get into. We just put it on there for, because it's important. Here's some reviews. Our food is excellent. We're very proud of the food that we're putting out there. We get raving reviews. And if we ever did get a bad review, you know, I'm there working, owner operating, operator minimum 65 hours a week, and we take care of it. You know, no guest leaves unhappy. If something happens, we make sure it's right. And that's not just what we've done here. You know, I've been in the restaurant business for 15 years as general manager of big restaurants, and that's something that I've always done. I've always learned in my training process. So just a couple of reviews for you to look at. And then the last one is just a couple of quotations that we put down, what people have said to us as far as wanting beer and wine when they come in. So if you have any questions, happy to answer that.
Let's go ahead and open it up here, Brandon. Go ahead. Anyone got some questions for Brandon? Anyone?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I, I read in the paper where he cooked his very first brick oven pizza the night before he opened.
That is true. Yeah. You know, living, I've lived all around the country for previous jobs in the restaurant business, and I just, I feel, I felt like the Michigan market, especially in the suburbs, was lacking of a real good quality East Coast stone-fired pizza. And the oven is expensive. And to get all the permits and stuff, you know, you write this beautiful menu, which sounds good on paper and it reads good. But yeah, the night before we did our soft opening, we've never made the fig and pig because to buy all those ingredients are expensive. Never made the, never made the Michigan cherry and/or cheese pie, except for my, my oven at home, which was a disaster. But we came out of the oven and we're like, this, this is really good. And that was, that's pretty cool. But even since then, you know, it's been a year now, so we've been tweaking. Our crust is better now than it was when we first opened. We just tweaked it a couple of weeks ago just to, you know, what we think will hold up better in a to-go box. And yeah, so yeah, that was a, that was a pretty scary moment. And there was tears of scaredness and happiness once that pizza came out and it was, it was good. Like, I think we could do this. But yeah, that was, that was pretty funny and scary.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I remember you being here and we were talking about this last year. Maybe it was over a year ago. It might have been '17.
Yeah, it was about a year and a half.
Yeah. And I thought it was great that you were doing this here and that you were a resident doing this here. And I think I even said at the time that if you weren't a resident here, I probably wouldn't be in favor of giving this last one out. But you are, and you've done well, and I support it.
Thank you. Yeah. We've been here now for, I think, six, seven years. And then our sub now for, I think it's five, it's hard to remember all that. But I remember my oldest daughter's turning five in April, so yeah, about five years now. But we love it. You know, we're really excited about it. And I told you, the reason why I like being so close to home is, and the novella is my daughter's name, my youngest daughter's name. And, you know, that's just who we are. You know, family, you know, got me first always, and community as well, so...
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
You, you guys are doing a great job and you're growing. And let's say you all grow the space you're in, and you can't find another space in the township, and you move out of the township. Do you take the license with you out of our township?
Um, no.
That would be a problem I would worry about.
Yeah. The good thing for us, and we've kind of spoken about this, is if we get to that point, that's a great thing. But Dan Tresco is my business partner, and he owns the building that we're in. So we're not leaving that building. He, you know, he's moving people around quite often in there for other businesses to come in. So yeah, we've looked at, you know, we're not, we're not there right now, but we have talked about our dream plan of maybe taking over a little more of the building that we're in. So, so yeah, so we don't want to leave. We do want to grow, you know, and we do want to open another novella somewhere. Or, you know, my daughter, Presley, is getting upset because there's a novellas and there's no Presley. So, you know, there are other things that we want to do, but novellas is our baby. And we, you know, it's important to us.
Let me ask you this. Is there a way, and I, this may be a question for the attorneys, is there a way to put a stipulation that if you moved out of the township, the liquor license would stay in the township? Or does that become part of the business and they...
Well, if they were agreeable to doing that, we could put an agreement together.
Yeah.
Would you?
Yeah, we're not against that. You know, I think, yeah, we just want to, we really want to get it because it's important for us.
Here's my take on this. We've been holding on to this liquor license like it's gold since I've been on the board. And I think it's time to let someone use it.
We also talked about creating some type of scorecard to make this easier.
We did.
But the challenge is, is that you're really comparing grapes to apples to watermelons because how do you evaluate the difference between a national major chain in a 20,000-square-foot in a 20,000 square foot building to an independent entrepreneur leasing space in a building? Um, they're going to have different rates of employees, different levels of investment, um, just a whole different business model altogether. So we attempted to put together a scorecard and it was very difficult to make it somewhat fair.
Right. I got that. Well, I, but my opinion is, is if you're willing to make sure it stays at the township, no matter what you do, I would, I would be for it. And go ahead. And I mean, if anyone else has any questions, uh, ask them or there's a motion in order.
I'm good with it either way. I mean, it, I'm a frequent customer, so it's good stuff. And yeah, I'd like to keep you here.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would say that as far as community, um, it, it's fantastic when I maybe go there a little too often. And, uh, I would never go next door and have a drink. But, uh, I, um, I do appreciate, although I'm sometimes embarrassed when I do call and he recognizes my, my voice on the phone. I'm like, "Oh no, he knows I'm calling." But I can honestly say that there, there is no other business in the community that, where I've called in and they recognize who I am. And, uh, uh, so I'm definitely in favor of, of the license.
Maybe you call her way too much.
I just think that he's a good people person and he remembers.
Well, plus like, we have a great staff. We really do. Um, and we have people there from the beginning still and they know people. And I'm there, you know, minimum six days a week and it's because we love it. You know, people are, we have, we have a great team.
Tell them about your jacket.
Oh, would somebody like to carve a motion out for?
Yeah.
I just, I can make one.
Please.
I just want to make a comment also.
Please, absolutely.
And I agree with Lisa. I love your pizza.
Thank you.
I do. And I, I swear you're there a lot. And, um, you're, you're absolutely correct with your, um, workers or your partners in crime. You might want to say. They are wonderful. They're delightful. They are great with service. And I am 100% for, um, actually, um, for you to get the liquor license. And with that, I would love to make a motion.
Let's hear it.
All right.
It's in the back page of your cap.
Is it in the back page?
Yeah, it's the local agreement approval.
All right.
The resolution?
I will make a motion to approve the liquor license for Novella's Pizza LLC. Um, do we want to add taverns? It doesn't say that, but, oh, a tavern license. Um, we're making an, an agreement to have the license, not leave Lion Township if you just so would leave the township.
Absolutely.
And that would be my motion.
Okay.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion to support. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go get your liquor.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That is awesome.
Keep up the good work. Everybody loves you.
We'll keep you informed on our Vegas trip. We'll be live streaming. And, um, every, and a little cool thing that I was going to say, I don't want to keep everybody here too long, but, um, so I've been a hockey player my whole life. Played hockey. It's important. My groomers started getting into it. It's kind of funny. But anyways, we first opened, I have a friend who does this. He made, um, Novella's Pizza hockey jerseys for us.
Oh, nice.
And it's sweet. And so we have been, that, uh, if you work in our restaurant for a year, you get a hockey jersey with the year that you started as your number, so '18 with your name on it. So don't tell anybody. I just got them a couple of days ago for, uh, our people who've been here for a year.
I think you just told it.
Yeah, in Vegas. We're really excited. Everyone there wears chef coats, so we're going to be wearing jerseys.
That is very cool.
That is awesome.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the assistance for the Woodwin Village entrance road repair. And this basically, the Woodwin Village, uh, Association has been in contact with, actually Patty and I, for quite a few years now. And their, their situation being is our sludge trucks that run through their neighborhood on the private roads destroy the entrance to Woodwin Village. And it doesn't only destroy the entrance, but it also destroys a lot of landscaping throughout the, uh, the village there. They, they, they turn too sharp because the trucks aren't big. They're very heavy. And they've put rocks in corners where the trucks have been tearing up the lawns. And the last thing that happened is the rock got lodged under the, the sludge truck and it drug it for many, many, many yards and destroyed the asphalt there too. But they're not asking for that help. What they did is they went out and Leslie's been working with them also, trying to figure out this entrance because it is very destroyed. And they asked the township if we'd be willing to help them. Um, their, their lowest bid that they got was $48,000 to tear this entrance out and replace it. And they've asked, mostly Patty and I have had, uh, different conversations with them over the last few years, what we would, if we would help them at all, and if so, how much would we put towards that money? And I'll tell you, it's been, the, it's been crazy how bad these trucks have destroyed that. Now, the good thing is, coming up here, what, next year, we'll have the new entrance that the sludge trucks will use to go out the county roads out of the new development there. So they will not have to deal with the sludge trucks anymore. But I, I really believe that we should pay up to at least $20,000 on this thing. I mean, that's my thought on how much damage we've done over the several years that, uh, they've been going. Now, I have, I've reached out to the school because the schools are back there and their school buses use that entrance quite a bit. But they have a problem with off-premise monies and if they're not associated, it's basically, they're not going to help. I mean, they didn't say they were, it has to go through process and they could kick in. But this, they're still going to ask about it. But I would like to help them out. But again, this is up to this board to, uh, to determine whether you believe we're, we have any liability on that, um, entrance or not. Patty, I don't know if you already had anything to add.
Yeah, I feel exactly the same way. We thought about a thousand dollars a year sewer treatment plant. It's been about 20 years old. You know, we built it in like 1999 and, uh, we kind of, and it's their own money. If you really think about it, it's not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of the sewer fund that they actually are contributing to. And if you go out there and look at it and John gave quite a, he gave quite a, um, good detail of the last incident, which was where they did drag the boulders. And, and right now, we have to, we have to have hot, you know, we have to haul the sludge. So, um, we really thought, uh, out of the 48,000, if, if, if the board would see fit to contribute $20,000, we thought that was, seemed very fair and reasonable. And I think they would be very pleased with that. And so that, that's actually what.
And again, they're not asking for any monies. They don't know how much it's worth. They, they aren't asking anything. That's just our thoughts to help them. So totally up to this board to determine if that.
We bring it here and.
I mean, they're, like you said, they're sewer users. This is sewer enterprise money. So you're not a sewer customer at the township. Your dollars are not paying for this.
That's right.
You know, I live four miles away, five miles away. I'm a sewer customer. So the sludge that gets hauled out of there, I'm, my household and all the others are a contributor to it. So if I lived in that neighborhood and my private roads are being beaten up, I would feel it's equitable to have some help as well. So I would agree with you.
And they're also dealing with the county. They've got a county apron. So that's what's kind of kicking the cost up a little bit.
Yeah. It is, it's destroyed.
It is really, really bad.
Absolutely destroyed. It's the worst in the township. I'm not aware of a worse entrance or apron than that. And it's, like you said, it's not that old. It's 20 years, 28 years old.
But it's wear and tear and I'm sure our trucks are a big, you know, a big part of that.
They're extremely heavy.
A thousand dollars a year for ongoing maintenance is, seems absolutely reasonable to put it in those terms.
It does. If you put it in, think about it.
And it's not general fund money.
Right. And it, it took that long to destroy it too. I mean, so I, I don't know. John and I, we talked it over and we thought, we, that's the number we came up with. So we thought it seemed fair and equitable. So.
Well, no, I just, I'm just listening, but it's a, it's a fascinating argument. And I don't disagree with everything, but, um, even the dollar amount. I guess what I'm kind of concerned about is what, what are we going to do in, in the future? I mean, we have also the entrance to the water plants too. Is that going to be another situation where we're going to do this?
I think them are, are Oakland County roads.
See, this is.
Going into the water plant. The village are private roads. And I think the Oakland County owns the roads going into the water plant. So we won't have the situation with the water plant.
Well, this is. We might. That's correct.
Right, which would be fair.
But that would be fair.
That would be fair.
The sludge trucks are the big difference.
They're heavy.
On that east, um, approach. And, and you're going to get more and more of them. You know, as you grow and your amount of sewage increases, so does the sludge.
Right. And that was one of the concerns, that was one of the concerns I brought up when the new subdivision that's going to be taking it, it's a gravel road. So, uh, I'm just saying, this is going to probably escalate in the future to the private, or to the, was it Oak, Oak Ridge?
To the east.
To the east. I mean.
I don't think so because this is known. When they put this together, they know that this is happening. It's in, I, I believe they're going to put it in their papers too. I think the, uh, I think it's going to be in the paperwork that they sign, the agreement.
But it's still a cost of doing business. Even if you have to, it's still, you've still got to maintain your roads.
Right. We have access through a neighborhood, not, not a county, not directly onto a county road. It's just not so, I don't know.
Yeah.
Did, John, did you say that, uh, Brompton Way, is that the way that you would get into the water?
Hmm, I think so.
Brompton is the way you get into water.
Brompton, Brompton Way.
That's public.
I think it's a public road, yeah.
It is.
I believe it's a public road. I'm not sure.
And I guess my, I know it's dovetailing a little bit with what you said, John, regarding the school system. And I think, I mean, as much as it would be nice for the school district to help with all of their buses coming in through that, um, and being probably a contributor to some of that, uh, is there a way that we can communicate with the school?
I'm talking to them about it. They haven't, they haven't said no.
Right. Um, but I mean, if, if that were the case, can we communicate to them? Look, that maybe they need to change the way in which they come into this, uh, to Hardy Elementary because it is a.
They tried that and they talked about that. They, they changed for a very short period of time and then they went right back.
Okay. I mean, I, and I.
They tried that.
The east entrance is much closer to that school.
And then there's the daycare too.
Yeah, they asked the daycare to help also.
They're, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I've actually been communicating with Carol about, um, if, if, it's, it's a big ticket item for them. And we're going to see how, if, if too, if they can do a special assessment for either the remaining amount. If, if we were to contribute, how can they divide that up? And actually, she, she's right. She, uh, gave me some good information, but I think we're going to talk to Paul Wachowski about that. Because they, they want to share and, you know, it's not only us, it's not only the residents. It's the daycare, it's the school buses. It, it's a lot of extra people going in and out too. So, um, we're going to further research that.
I would just wonder whether funding, because you wouldn't bond a small amount like this. So you, would we put the money up?
Well, we'd have to bring that back. That would be totally up for the board.
Ask, yeah.
That would totally be up for the board. And then we've always charged 5% admin fee. So, but, but we thought first, let's see how much the board would consider contributing. Let us see if the school would help out at all. And if we can get anything, if they can get anything from the daycare, maybe we can bring it down enough where they wouldn't have to. So it's, it's kind of a little thing in progress, but we've been checking it all out and seeing what we can do. But we figured we should bring it to the board first. And we'll bring you more information or if, depending on again, what, what funding we can help them obtain.
So are you looking for feedback tonight? And then you're going to go talk to them and get their pricing? And then we would, we would give them the money we would pay.
The 48,000 is the lowest bid that they got. They had three bids.
Yeah, they, they've been doing their due diligence also. So we kind of want to make a commitment to them.
Sure.
So that, that we, we can kind of go forward because I do want to talk to Paul to see if we can help him out with anything else. And if we were to, say we took responsibility and did it and did the special assessment back to them, we'd have to bring that to the board. But maybe not. Depends on the contributions.
So that would be, that would be the question, if a woman to kick in some money. And, and 20 is just our thought. You mean, it could be anything under, it could be anything more. I mean, it's, it's, it's totally a number.
We thought it seemed rational.
Yeah.
And I, and I like it.
And they did not ask for that, just so you know.
No, no, they did not.
Yeah.
They did not.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve 20,000, um, to help to repair the entrance at Woodwin Village, um, road, okay, again, Woodwin Village Road Repair of the private road and entrance out, out of the repair and maintenance line item for the sewer fund. So we'll take it right out of sewer, repair and maintenance.
I'll support that.
All right, we have a motion to support. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you. They're going to be, they're going to be.
They'll be very, very happy.
I don't think I read that.
You don't think so?
I was trying to hash it out.
All right, moving on. Maximum height of the senior housing text amendment, AP 1861. Um, Patrick, you want to take that one?
Sure, thank you. Um, this is a first reading of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And, um, what it is, is, um, in the last several months, we had, uh, gotten a couple of inquiries from a couple of different, uh, senior housing developers, um, one of which being Pearl Developers, but another, uh, which was, um, I think last summer. And, uh, both senior housing developers had the same concern about, uh, one of the, uh, items in the zoning ordinance regarding the height of senior housing facilities. Uh, specifically in section 19.03D8, uh, the height of a senior housing facility is limited at 35 feet and a maximum of two stories. Um, in both cases, uh, the senior housing developers, uh, didn't have any objection to the 35-foot overall height. Uh, but one of the things that they did say was difficult was getting a senior facility, uh, for two stories. Um, specifically like, uh, an active senior living facility. Um, and so after hearing a couple of those and, uh, concerns and looking at other ordinances, uh, we prepared an amendment for the planning commission's consideration that would, uh, keep the limit of the height at 35 feet, so the number of feet would not change, uh, but to increase the number of stories from a maximum of two to a maximum of three. Um, based on that proposed change, it would have the following benefits. The first is, um, like I said, the overall height, uh, wouldn't change at 35 foot being the cap. Uh, the next is that, uh, from going from two to three stories, um, it would not change the maximum density of the housing facility. So the density would be unchanged. So, so if someone were to do a three-story building, um, they could reduce the building and, and therefore reduce the impervious surfaces. Um, the next is a, uh, smaller building footprint with lower building costs and improve accessibility inside the building, uh, by shortening the distance between, uh, bedrooms and other amenities within the facility. Um, and then finally, in our review of, uh, several other ordinances, uh, three-story senior housing, um, is a common, uh, type of land use. At the January 13th, uh, planning commission meeting, um, the planning commission held a public hearing and discussed the proposal. Uh, during, uh, the public hearing and, uh, before, there were, uh, two zoning related items that came up. The first is regarding the roof height. And there was a question of whether, uh, if a building could go at 35 feet and have a flat roof. And in looking at the zoning ordinance, uh, senior housing living facilities, uh, must have a minimum roof pitch of 512. So therefore, with an increase in the number of stories, they couldn't have a flat roof. They would have to have that 512 pitch. Uh, the other concern that came up was regarding screening. Uh, this was more of a site-specific concern, uh, as it relates to Pearl. But, uh, because this proposed ordinance would have township-wide applicability, um, it, it's worth noting, uh, anywhere in the township, uh, where there's the potential for a senior living facility. And, um, in Article 15 of the zoning ordinance, it requires landscape screening along the perimeter of a, a senior housing facility if it is adjacent to single-family residences. Um, and specifically what that requirement would be is a row of closely spaced evergreens, no farther than 15 feet apart, which would reasonably be expected to form a complete visual barrier within, um, three years at six feet above ground level. So in most cases, that's a stagger grow of, uh, evergreen trees. So if there's a senior living facility that abuts a single-family residential district, those screening requirements would apply, uh, anywhere in the township, not just for any one specific site. Um, after closing the public hearing and deliberating on the amendment, the planning commission adopted a motion to recommend approval of the amendment to the township board of trustees. Uh, so that concludes our written report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Everyone understand what we're, we're looking at here? Pretty basic, really. Are there any questions for Patrick?
I have some, well, I just have some concerns. I don't know if there's any additional, if anybody has any questions.
Go ahead. Put them out there.
Um, so I have, I keep coming back to the idea that this is more site-specific, like Patrick said. And I, I like the project and I like it, what, what it is that, um, that they want to achieve. But, um, the, I guess I feel like this, this expectation is not necessarily, um, like a requirement. So I, I understand that the smaller building footprint will lower building costs, et cetera, et cetera. But that's only assuming that, I know that the density will stay the same, but it doesn't necessarily mean that, or, that the, uh, footprint will, will be smaller. Um, so, you know, I have some problems with this being more of a developer-driven change to a township-wide ordinance. Um, like I said, I, I like the project. I like the business plan for the specific site. But, uh, the ordinance change would be based on, or should be based on best practice, um, planning principles and not necessarily initiated by developers. Um, and, you know, we have a, a few ways for developers to, to kind of tweak and, and, uh, come up with a, a more, more pleasing plan. You know, we have the PD option for subdivisions and that provides a township-wide benefit for an adjustment in our ordinances and standards. And we also have single-family development options such as single-family cluster and average lot size developments. And both of these provide a trade-off such as usable open space and scenic vistas. So by simply changing this ordinance, the, really the benefit is only to the developer. It's not really. not really a building option. And we're basing this on, I guess it's a, it's a fallacy, I guess, because they may, they may come back with the same number of units, but those units are larger. And if those units are larger, the footprint doesn't change. The footprint is the same. We assumed that it would be a smaller footprint, because they would be going to three stories instead of two. And so, if the, if the footprint is in fact smaller, then the reduction provides a benefit economically to the developer, because then those infrastructure costs are reduced. But then there's nothing township-wide as a benefit that we would be getting for changing this, this ordinance. Or if we, if they have the same footprint and larger units, again, it becomes an issue of the township not really getting any, any benefit township-wide for a change to the ordinance. It just becomes more money in the developer's pocket. And so, I would feel more comfortable with having this as an option, but in some way, and I guess that would be for you guys to figure that out, but in some way, making it so that if you do go to the three floors, you do have to have a reduced footprint. That way, we're, we're making sure that there's a trade-off, that they don't have to go to three floors, but if they do, we have, then they would have to have a smaller footprint, instead of it just simply being a, in my opinion, a flawed if-then statement. Just because they're going to three floors doesn't mean that they will absolutely be a smaller footprint.
Yeah, and Doug, John, oh, sorry, John.
I was just gonna say, I don't agree with that. I think a developer, they research, they know the size of the unit they want that will sell. I don't think they're gonna be expanding the size of the apartment, then that would cause them to up their fee, up their price.
Well, then that makes them more money.
Well, they're working in a particular area that will lease these things. I mean, they have their price point they're trying to reach. And Abbey Park is already three floors.
That was a consent judgment, though.
What's that?
That was a consent judgment that was per ordinance.
But it is. I mean, it's not a, you know, I have no issue with this, changing the ordinance.
I guess I should clarify, John, because I don't want you to, I don't want it to be the impression that I have a problem with three stories. I don't have a problem with three stories.
No, I understand what you were saying. You think they just make them bigger and keep, you know, not, no gain from the footprint.
So, we don't have it placed within this ordinance that it would in fact, if they went to three floors, that it would in fact be a smaller footprint? That's just an assumption.
I don't know. Over the years, I've known a few builders and how they work, and believe me, they, they know the price point they want, and they know how to achieve it.
All right, well, Sean, you have something else?
I was just gonna say, the two stories are thirty-five feet. I, you know, I don't, you don't build these buildings taller than you absolutely have to. So, I don't doubt that they can build three stories and thirty-five feet, but if they only build a two-story building, it probably won't be anywhere near thirty-five feet. And my fear is that the PD, which gets a bad name sometimes, has a place. And I think when, you know, someone could come in and ask for a PD approval on a project like this, and we could work through some of these issues, because maybe this site isn't a bad site to have three stories, to your point, Lisa. Just like Abbey Park's not really imposing at three stories, in my opinion, John, to your, your point. My fear and why I don't like this is because we're basically saying that anyone by right with, you know, a certain type of product can come in and just, just build it. There's no negotiating, there's no making sure the site's appropriate, there's, it's just pretty straight ahead. And the other thing, we call this an amendment to allow for three stories or thirty-five feet in senior housing products. What happens in ten years where they decide it's not gonna be a senior housing product anymore? Do we make them vacate the top floor or tear the top floor off? It's still gonna be three stories, it's still gonna be thirty-five feet, but seniors, we can't make them keep seniors in this building. So, I think that's a flaw in and of itself. I mean, how do you, how do you regulate who stays there? So, it's either a multiple family with certain regulations, or it's single family. I don't know how we differentiate based on age, how tall a building would be. That, that doesn't make any sense to me. So, I do not support this approach.
What's Pendleton?
It's also three.
Is it three?
I believe it is, yeah. And that's, that's, you know, Abbey Park is senior, and that was by consent judgment. Pendleton-
Is it PD?
Was it, yeah, we're talking about that later. And that through PD was allowed to have three stories, so. That's my hangup, is just the way it's being approached, not necessarily that it's bad, but, you know, bigger units, more rooms, could make more parking, and we could be going back the other direction with impervious-
But they really haven't brought the site plan yet.
I know.
So, we don't really, I mean, that's up to us to stop that in the site plan, if that's a problem.
What's the, yeah, what's the ordinance is in place?
If there's not enough parking for the units and-
No, no, my fear is, is they're saying they're gonna make the building smaller, but let's say they, they add bedrooms to units, and it starts driving the traffic count up, and we've gotta put twenty more parking spaces. They'd have room for it, but it would eat away at their argument that they're gonna cover less, you know, less green space, that's all. And there aren't, parking's not a huge component of most senior housing developments, because they usually utilize transportation. They don't all have a bunch of cars. I mean, that's not been my observation, but I don't know. I guess I get back to it being a certain height and a certain number of stories for senior housing, as opposed to just multiple-family housing. And then how do we, because if we do this, in ten years, somebody will be sitting here saying, "Well, look, we don't want seniors to live here anymore, what are we gonna do? Now, we need a variance, or we need to do, change the ordinance."
I mean, we can't really speculate on that.
I'm just saying, we're clearly setting ourselves up for a problem in my mind later with that kinda wording, but that's just my opinion, and I know it's just frustrating, but.
I don't know if I have too much to add. I guess the, I know this is a township-wide ordinance, but again, what I still feel uncomfortable with is, and same thing as last month, is, you know, it's a township-owned parcel, somebody comes in to buy it, we've done, you know, zoning, rezoning on part of the property, and now they're looking at a, you know, two-to-three-story thing. I just, it's a bit much for me.
Okay, anyone else? Have you had anything? So, I think if we have a thirty-five foot, I mean, is there any way to ask for a PD on this particular piece? Have them bring it back as a PD and ask them to, I mean, is it starting the process all over again?
From the zoning standpoint, they would be starting their zoning process over again. It would just be a matter of them designing it according to the PD, and their rezoning process for PD would be concurrent with the site plan process. It'd be something different for them, but-
Would it be more time? I mean, is it, is it more time to put this through in a PD forum? So, possibly we could limit it to this one site?
I don't know if it'd be longer in a PD versus site plan. It just depends on how their site plan comes out. I think they're, they're, they may be in the process of preparing a site plan at this point. I don't know what their schedule is for first and many. It may be later this month or in March sometime. So, with PD, that would bring it back to conceptual, and then going through the conceptual preliminary final. So, it might be a little bit longer with a, with a PD.
Okay, so what's the suggestion of this board? There's options out there? I mean-
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, we beat it up at the Planning Commission, I just don't have a problem. I don't.
I think the problem that this board is asking is the township-wide, opening the-
I'm looking at it as the township-wide. I think they're all looking at it, and it's a specific piece of property.
Well, I'm absolutely, I mean, I, I am opposed to having it as a township-wide change to our ordinance, because of those, of those specifics, that there's no, there's no guarantee. This, this particular unit with this, our facility with this particular business plan may not want to have larger apartments, and may not wanna have, like, you know, the community amenities that they could have in a senior housing facility. You could have a nice large movie theater within there for the residents, you could have a larger dining room. I mean, there are so many options available for senior housing, that even though this one particular plan and this one particular applicant may not be looking at that with their price point, but this is township-wide. And once this is changed, once this ordinance is changed, it means that any applicant can come in with thirty-five feet, three floors, and not have that reduction. We're kinda, you know, that's one of the benefits. It says, it will provide the following benefits, and it says a smaller footprint. Well, we can't guarantee that it's a smaller footprint, the way in which it's written. So, if this were, if this particular site were to come in as a PD, I would, I mean, of course, I'd have to see the site plan, but I would be more agreeable to a site-specific plan being three stories than a township-wide change to our ordinance, with absolutely no guarantee that this would, that every senior housing facility that would come to the township would in fact have a smaller building footprint.
So, I guess this question, just, it asks whether or not we wanna make a change to zoning ordinance, and really Pearl's referenced in here only because they've brought this up, but it's two separate issues. So, the whole PD thing isn't even need to be talked about tonight, because this either moves ahead as it's proposed, and had, had as amended, or it fails, and then they have a decision to make. So, it's-
But I'd like to have an option. You know, there's an option-
Yeah, and I think there are-
Possibly for them to go forward if it failed.
Sure, and I think that could be to pursue the PD. And if they haven't submitted any plans yet, then, I mean, my guess is they're waiting to see how this shakes out, because they pushed this forward.
They're also waiting on their rezoning. And when we originally talked to them about the issue of the height, by that point, they were the second senior housing developer to approach the township about the same issue. So, we said that we would go to the Planning Commission with a proposal, that as a, as an applicant, they have the option of applying for a text amendment. But we said, you know, they could still apply for a text amendment if they want to, that's their right, but as, as consultants, we would bring this to the Planning Commission as a proposal, because it's something that we're hearing for multifamily housing. So, you know, what, whatever they come back with, depending on what happens with the amendment, would be up to them, whether they wanna do a PD or some other option.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my opinion, I really, if it's thirty, if our ordinance is thirty-five feet, I really don't have a problem if they can stay within that ordinance. If they can, if they can put the floors under that ordinance, I mean, under that thirty-five feet, I mean, why would we micromanage the entire, I mean, that's, I guess I don't get that.
Well, Stefan, who's an architect, who's on our Planning Commission, said that most senior housing is at least three stories or more now. He said he designs a lot of that kinda stuff. So, I don't know. If we're not up to date, obviously our sign ordinance was not up to date, maybe we're just not moving forward. I kinda agreed with John. Why did we have the thirty-five feet then? I guess that's the question. Why, why do we have it thirty-five feet?
Then it begs the question, do we need to not just change a number in here from a two to a three, and really look at the whole thing? Or else we're just kicking the can on what might be out, out of date? Because there are probably other regulations that fits that out date that need to be addressed as well.
I mean, he, he made a lot of, I mean, he made a lot of sensible determinations, that's his business, and that's what he does, and that's what he designs. I'm not saying just senior housing, but he said it's all over the place, and property is a premium. So, it made logic, I mean, in my mind, it made logical sense. If we, if we're not raising our height, and you can put, I don't know, I look at it the same thing. If you build a house, if you can have twelve kids in it or six kids in it, I guess, it's, to me, like, basically the same thing, as long as it's, and if you're not using more service, which could be possible, could not be possible, but it could be possible.
I'm gonna put the fire chief on the spot. I mean, when we look at things like this, or talk about accessibility and building height, did anyone ask them to do a review of this? And I mean, you're not prepared, I didn't ask you about this, so I apologize.
He's prepared. I've talked to him a multiple times on it.
Well, your business is to always be prepared, so I guess I'll retract that. But you didn't know I was gonna ask you this question, so I don't wanna ambush you, but at the, yeah, I mean, I, we don't have a ladder truck. I don't know, I mean, obviously, this is a suppressed building, but, you know, there are a lot of suppressed buildings that you still need to rescue people from, because you can't get them out, which is why-
Talk from here, or?
Hey, up to you.
Right up.
Talk to him at length about this.
Yeah, and I mean, I just-
I have, because of the Planning Commission.
I would love his feedback as a part of the packet.
We have no, I mean, when we look at the height, we have no concern about second, two or three stories. I mean, obviously, it does change tactics, operations, things like that, but when we start getting to the seventy-five feet, which is a high rise, and there's a lot more, you know, restrictions, restrictions in there. But with this type of facility, you know, we would have all of the built-in fire protection as far as suppression system, and not to mention the separation between floors and separation stairways, and like I said, it's, it's about one of the safest, I'm just talking about, I'm not in that discussion, but I'm just talking about from our fire department operations, that it is one of our safest type of facilities. Yeah, if we did have something go wrong at Abbey Park or anywhere, then we're going to be challenged with, you know, more people. But as far as the built-in, you know, you mentioned redundancies earlier, that's what we're looking for, as far as, you know, like I said, egress inspections are there. So, I have no concern about the three-story. I know a risk manager who will not stay above a seventh story in any high-rise, because that's the anticipated reach of a ladder truck if he goes to Vegas. So, that's useless information, but that's, that's pretty much, we don't really have any concerns at all.
But I also guess, if we have a, if we have an ordinance that says that you're allowed to go thirty-five foot high, what would stop them from putting two stories in on a huge steep roof to change the architecture? It would still, it would be no different.
Cost.
But, you know what I'm saying, though? I mean, that could, they could do that, right?
Potentially.
Yeah. So, I guess I'm not, I'm kinda lost as to why we wouldn't allow them to put what they could underneath a thirty-five foot pad. This is my, this is my thought.
From a builder's standpoint, too, it's much less expensive to go up than it is out. So, they're not gonna suddenly put bigger rooms in, I don't see it.
But I think the also, the senior living things were based on sprawling areas. They wanted to keep seniors straight up and down, where they get into elevators and go straight down, they come out, everything is close.
Right.
They're not walking sprawling wings to get places, or, you know, it's basically straight up and down, they get out of their elevator, and they have shorter areas to walk. And I think that's one of the ideas in the senior, you know, living. All right, so, we need to move on. So, you guys either wanna, wanna make, or how you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to change, what do you call it? I'll change the ordinance, section number nineteen oh three D eight, which limits the building height of senior housing to thirty-five feet and a maximum of two stories, change that to three stories, while the minimum height of thirty-five feet remains.
Maximum.
What's that?
You said minimum, don't you mean maximum? Thirty-five?
Maximum, thirty-five, yes.
Do we have support?
Do I need anything else? This would be from second reading, AP eighteen sixty-one to second. We'll make it to second reading, is that what the motion is?
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a support. And I'd like to ask one other question. So, we stated in your letter that they have to have a five-twelve pitch minimum to get to thirty, they have to have a five-twelve on top of that building? Cannot be a flat roof.
That's correct, and that's regardless of the height of the building. So, even if it were one story, they would have to put at least a five-twelve pitch on it. For, it's an architectural standard, make it look consistent with what they might be abutting, which would be a single-family residential neighborhood or some other similar use.
Okay. That's important. All right, any other discussion? What would you call this one by a roll, please?
Michelle Cash?
Yes.
Patricia Carcom?
Yes.
Christopher Inla?
No.
Lisa Blade?
No.
John Dolan?
Yes.
John Hicks?
Yes.
Sean O'Neil?
No.
All right, moving on. Marijuana establishments tax amendment. You got this one too, Patrick?
Yeah. So, as we know, late last year- So as we know, late last year, in 2018, there was a ballot proposal approved for the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act that was adopted in 2018. And the act allows a municipality to completely prohibit or limit the number of marijuana establishments within its boundaries. At the January 14th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on a proposed zoning ordinance amendment that would define marijuana establishments in accordance with that act, and also to prohibit all marijuana establishments in the zoning ordinance. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment is enclosed for your review. As you probably recall, there was a separate ordinance that was a standalone police power ordinance that was adopted. This is a similar ordinance, except that it will be in the zoning ordinance. So if somebody were to go to the zoning ordinance to see if we address the use, this amendment would do that, that same thing. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right. Anyone have any questions, Patrick?
Make a motion to move AP 18-72 to second reading.
All support.
Motion support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, moving on. Orchards of Lyon rezoning, AP 18-76. That's you again, Patrick?
Thank you. In early 2014, there was a new zoning district that was adopted. It was the New Hudson zoning district, and it included three different sub-districts, the core, the edge, and the neighborhood. And the New Hudson district was adopted around the New Hudson area, and at that time, the district also included four parcels that are part of the plan development known as the Orchards of Lyon. As you know, the plan developments are very unique zoning districts in the township because not only is there different land uses and densities and zoning districts from which they came, but there's also a recorded agreement with every plan development. And so when someone searches property or transfers property in a plan development, that agreement runs in the chain of title. We had discovered a few months ago that there were four parcels in the New Hudson zoning district that were also in the Orchards of Lyon PD. And so that created a little bit of a conflict in the sense that on the zoning map, it showed the New Hudson zoning district because that was the more recent district. However, the New Hudson zoning district did not do anything to change the terms of the PD zoning that was underlying. So effectively, the PD agreement is in effect, remains in effect. The New Hudson zoning district didn't do anything to change that. And what we recommend doing is to take those four subject parcels and remove the New Hudson zoning district from those four parcels. With the removal of the New Hudson zoning district, what will remain is the Orchards of Lyon PD. We held a public hearing with the planning commission on January 14th, and there were no comments received during the public hearing. There were notices sent to the property owners of the four parcels. That included one of the parcels that has the apartment buildings on them. And by state law, it goes to everybody within 300 feet. And we didn't have any comments at the public hearing about the proposed rezoning. Any concerns that would have come from anyone from the Orchards of Lyon, our first response to them would have been, this doesn't change the terms of their development or their PD agreement or anything like that. Basically, what it would do is it would remove a zoning district from the four parcels and actually make it more clear for the Orchards of Lyon that those four parcels are in fact part of the PD, and nothing changes. So the planning commission held the public hearing and adopted a motion recommending approval of rezoning to remove the subject four parcels from the New Hudson zoning district and to retain the existing PD on those four parcels entirely. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, does everyone understand the situation?
Yeah, I want to just mention that I had emailed Patrick and Brian today with some questions, and I appreciate getting the information back, just to kind of clear a picture of where these parcels were located. And two of them actually are detention basins, or retention basins, but they're basins, and there's water in them on the area that I looked at. So they're unusable for anything else, practically speaking, so. And I think the only one that's clearly usable is the one that we're going to talk about potentially next.
Okay. So you were satisfied with your-
I appreciate them getting me the, getting back to me, yeah, so quickly. And yeah, really, this, in my mind, needs to correct this conflict that is out there.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
This goes to second reading, all right? I'll make a motion to move the Orchards of Lyon rezoning, AP 18-76, to second reading.
All support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Orchards of Lyon Outlot Use Interpretation. Patrick, that's you.
Okay, thank you. So coming off the heels of the last agenda item, the Orchards of Lyon is a residential plan development, south side of Grand River, west of Milford Road. And it's predominantly single-family and multifamily with several outlots along New Hudson Drive. And as trustee O'Neill stated, that two of those outlots have ponds on them, they're virtually, virtually unusable, except for the function that they provide in terms of stormwater management. But there is an outlot that is shown on the PD agreement that is not a pond, just an open piece of property with a little bit of a panhandle that goes north, but that panhandle itself is fairly unusable. It's got a berm, I don't know if it functions for any stormwater purpose, but that panhandle there is virtually unbuildable. So what we have is a relatively square parcel north of the pond. And back when the plan development was approved, there were indications that the township wanted and the developer was interested in developing a childcare facility. And so in the Lyon PD, Orchards of Lyon PD agreement, the Exhibit C allows for, quote, "for the construction of a childcare or other facility," the outlot, end quote. The property that is the subject of this request has recently been purchased, and the owner is interested in doing something with the property and has asked to get an interpretation from the board in terms of what qualifies as other facility. Certainly, a childcare would fit that use, but the PD agreement never stated what other facility was. And so the PD agreement allows for large questions like this to come to the board, and appropriately so, because any other facility could be interpreted by anyone for anything, so it's good to have a discussion, especially when it relates to a PD, which is something the board approved many years ago. And so the owner of the property has requested that the township board determine if a general or medical office, or a medical clinic as it stated in the ordinance, would be in keeping with the intent of another facility. The definition of medical clinic and office in Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance are as follows. A medical clinic is an establishment where human patients who are not lodged overnight are admitted for examination and treatment by a group of physicians, dentists, or similar professionals. A medical clinic may incorporate customary laboratories and pharmacies incidental to or necessary for its operation or to the service of its patients, but may not include facilities for overnight patient care or major surgery. So essentially, urgent cares, outpatient clinics, things like that, but no overnight hospitals, anything with overnight stay. The second definition is office. An office is defined in the zoning ordinance as a building or portion of a building wherein services are performed involving predominantly administrative, professional, or clerical operations. In looking at the standards of the original plan development approval, we look at Section 7.06 of the ordinance. Whether that's appropriate, first with the conformance with the plan development concept, in terms of those definitions of uses, those types of uses are commonly near or next door to daycare facilities. The next criteria is, and this is on page two, is the compatibility with adjacent uses. Office uses are generally quiet in nature when they're screened appropriately, and they would produce minimal visual impact. Office hours of operation are typically 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with weekday traffic. The medical uses are similar, except that the hours typically extend to later at night, especially if it's an urgent care clinic. Neither use typically has machinery or outdoor storage that would impact the neighbors. So compared to a childcare facility, an office or a medical clinic would be comparable in terms of the next door and off-site impacts in the way of sound, light, and visual impact. The only difference being is that a medical clinic might be open a few hours later. The next item is public services. We would defer to the township engineer in terms of any availability of utility service and the capacity for the site, but a clinic and office, they typically don't put much greater demands on facilities than, say, a daycare or some other similar use. For the impact on the traffic, daycare facilities have their peak periods 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And offices in a suburban environment typically have the same peak times, those being about 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And medical offices, their peak traffic is between 10:00 a.m. and noon, and again, between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. The rates of the traffic during the peak hour are pretty similar between, it's just a matter of when that peak hour takes place. Under the protection of natural environment, this outlot is vacant and relatively flat with vegetation only on the borders of the property. We don't anticipate any substantial grading, but that would be something that would come up at the site plan review. The next item is the compatibility with the master land use plan. The Orchards of Lyon PD was approved with a commercial component designed on this outlot, so it's clear that the PD intends to have a neighborhood-scale, non-residential amenity at this location. Master plan recommends high-density residential development on this outlot, but with the PD, it recommends a neighborhood service commercial type of use. And then finally, the compliance with applicable regulations. This is something that would be attainable, but something that would have to be reviewed when and reviewed and submitted. So in concluding our report, the next steps is that because the PD agreement does not define other facilities that would be permitted on the outlot, this request goes to the board. And the key question for the board is whether or not offices or medical clinics qualify as other facilities permitted in the PD agreement. If the board determines that, yes, office and/or medical clinic uses qualify, site plan review by the planning commission would be the next step for the applicant. As a permitted use in the PD, there would be no further board action required on the site plan. Alternatively, if the board determines that office and medical clinic uses do not qualify, then the owner must determine whether to either develop a childcare facility, pursue an amendment to the plan development to allow more uses, or third, take no action with respect to a township review at this time. So that concludes our review, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, Patrick, thank you. Well, any questions for Patrick on this one? Go ahead.
I have one. You know, the development agreement's probably like the document we don't have in front of us, but getting back to story, are limited, because there are three-story buildings across the street, is there a, an allowance for three stories in the current development agreement on this parcel? I mean, my hunch is if it was anticipated to be a daycare use, the answer would be no. But I guess, I don't necessarily object to a medical office as this type of use rather than a childcare facility here if it's been contemplated. It seems reasonable and comparable, but not if it's allowed to be three stories high because there are homes right behind it and to the north of it. I mean, it's wooded, but still.
Okay. The answer to that currently, but I have the agreement in front of me, I'm going to look for it.
Sure, sure. Thanks.
I guess my thoughts when I, when I was looking at this one was, I did look up the APA Planner's Dictionary for similar, similar uses, not other uses, but the childcare facilities, and it was, it did, care homes for seniors or persons with disabilities as potential comparable, similar uses. If it, it sounds like this was supposed to be a commercial component, I would be more open to a commercial component, but the office and medical, I don't feel as, that feels more of an office component, not necessarily commercial. So I guess I'm not really buying into it as, as much as a compatible use.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I just have a comment. I, in the review letter, where it identifies that the medical, a medical clinic would have hours perhaps 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 or 10:00 p.m., I do not think that a medical clinic would be compatible to this location, and I don't really think that it would qualify as an other facility permitted by the PD agreement. I'm still not 100% sure about office. It was intended initially as a non-residential component of this PD, but I, I wanted to be, have a little bit more information about item E, protection of natural environment, and the screening that was, that was mentioned. So I definitely do not think medical clinic would be an appropriate substitution, and I'm not sure about office. And definitely not three stories. Sean?
I guess by looking at this, we have to determine what we think, okay? It's a childcare facility, or it's something else? And I guess they're here asking what that something else could be. And I think they do have a right to know that if they bought the property. I mean, if we want to hold them to a childcare facility, I think that's what they want to know. So any questions would be, I mean, I'm not sure an office is a bad thing there, I don't know. There's some residential around it, I'm looking here. There's a pond, and, I mean, it's basically all residential. I think a childcare facility probably wouldn't be bad there. I mean, you've got all the people around it. The office, I don't know. You know? Are you, are you here for this? Are you here for this? Do you, do you have anything that you, is your plans for this piece? I mean, what is, I mean, please come up and talk to us about this so we can get a little direction here.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Mark Sirly, Thomas Duke Company. We represented the purchaser of this property. Quick little background, the initial research, they did their due diligence prior to acquisition, looking at current zoning of the property. Mentioned the neighborhood district, so their initial plan was for a multifamily project and following the ordinance. Met with planning consultants and engineers, very helpful, but pointed out the fact that, you know, per the PUD, which was, you know, was recorded, but the PUD also mentioned other use. They were surprised, but when, you know, going back to the drawing board now and said, okay, you know, if this building is, was intended, this property was intended to be non-residential, what other uses would be most similar? And so when you look at the, you know, construction, the layout, the architecture of a daycare facility, you know, it's an office, I mean, it looks like an office building. It looks, and, once you determine it's office, then you kind of decide, you know, kind of what works. What goes in an office building? General, medical, so that's how the conversation went. The challenge is regarding the daycare is that this PUD was approved 20 years, plus or minus years ago, with a good idea with this residential to grow, that this would be a good spot for it. The market has dictated that it's not. It's been marketed as a daycare for 20 years, been zero takers, and the township has been fortunate enough to get multiple daycare users in other locations that the users, the operators of those businesses, have determined to be far superior than this particular one. So now we look at, you know, we, you know, we believe in looking at the, you know, the minutes that PUD- minutes, the PUD, um, vote, approval, um, when it was specifically asked about a daycare, evidently they had somebody that they thought was in tow, uh, who was a gentleman, Chairman, uh, Reed. Uh, he's, he's, personally a board member, um, that actually asked the, the owner at that time, what happens if it's not daycare, if you don't get the daycare? And they said, well, then we would pursue another use and, um, bring it back to the board and then the, um, and that was the way the motion was made, accepted, and that's kind of where we're at. You know, again, you know, we see that other use, we see the intent, what we believe the intent to be is non-residential. Um, again, the first choice was to do multi-family, twenty, twenty-four units, but, um, in reviewing the PUD, it actually limited the total number of units in the PUD. So, so residential, that site, even if it was zoned, is not an option because it was governed by the PUD. Um, the challenge that we, you know, face if we're not, you know, one of the options that, uh, Mr. Sloan pointed out was to be amend the PUD, that's really not an option. There's a hundred unit members now of this PUD, all that single-family residential, to go and try to get, you know, approval on that would be, you know, next to impossible. So what we're asking the, uh, the board to consider would be a use that's, you know, similar in design, similar in traffic pattern, similar in, um, landscape, similar in, um, yeah, hours of operation, um, and, and very low impact on, uh, the neighbors. So.
Did you have, did you have something that you were looking at? Just office or medical? I mean, that's kind of broad. Did you, were you looking at one or the other? I mean, were you look, you just, the, the daycare, you don't think is feasible whatsoever?
Again, through thirty years of experience in, in the township and, and shown this site to, um, dozens of daycare operators, the site was not, uh, you know, desirable for them at that location. So to answer your question, Mr. Dolan, uh, at this particular point, we've kind of gone from what we thought was going to be a multi-family project, realized it can't be, so now what is the other use? So we're looking at office, um, medical, again, we just think is a desirable asset in a community, um, and, and so not having plans done yet, that we know, we know we've got to go for the planning commission yet, we're just trying to look for a little bit of flexibility. So if we got approval this evening for general office and then we have a user, a dentist, you know, then we'd be, you know, forced to come back with the same, uh, same ask.
Okay.
John, can I make a comment on this?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's important to note, I, I get a lot of phone calls for people looking for office space and we have very few buildings. And this is definitely a shortage on our part when it comes to that available product. Um, also for medical, um, we had an internist that came to us and we had no building to put them in, so we had to do a special land use in an industrial building. So those are just some examples of how there is a need for office space and for medical.
And, you know, I, I see that. The only, the only, the only doubt that I have is it, it would be like standalone. I mean, it's completely surrounded by residential. I mean, there's a like, there's like nothing anywhere close to it. And that's my only, that's my only take. Yes, that would be the, that would be the question. What could stand alone in the middle of a residential, um, situation that would work? I mean, that's what, that.
I mean, in my mind, the only thing that could would be like a single-story office that was kind of quiet and was constructed with more of a residential character.
But I mean, that's probably something that you're looking at. You're not looking for multi-floor surgical center or.
No, at this moment, at the max level, we'd be looking for like a two-story. Residential architect, architecture has to fit within the ordinance, so.
So I mean, it's tough. Clearly this is supposed to be a non-residential use, but again, it's sites specifically one particular use, so what else is compatible? I mean, the.
And I understand, we do have a lot of, of childcare centers. We really do. I mean, they're everywhere.
It's right across the street.
But did you say that you would consider two? Okay, I mean, I don't really know of any two-story daycare centers, and so I don't think that that would be really.
No, he's not looking daycare center.
Right, but my point is if it was initially intended to be a daycare center and now he's looking at potentially having a two-story office, I don't think that it, it would really fit the, the intended character of, um, what was approved at the PD. I mean, they, they approved having a, um, a daycare center, which is not two stories.
And that was kind of where my height question was going with Patrick and I put him on the spot because it just kind of came to, but I, what, what are the restrictions? I mean, two-story.
If I may, um, part of the argument that was made was that this site as office or a general, or as medical was very similar to daycare. Um, we understand your, your question and your comparison of, of not being able to find a just two-story, uh, daycare facility. So I, I think that our clients would be, my clients would be willing to limit to one story.
Hypothetically, if this were to come through the process, I mean, it would go to the, Patrick, you said just to the planning commission because of its location geographically, but would be regular.
Correct.
Okay. And any interpretation we would make would go along with that, you know, that would go to the planning commission as well, saying that in evaluating this, it was our determination that, let's just say a one-story office, uh, acceptable and in character, that, that would go along obviously with.
Uh, yeah, I, I see what you're saying and that would be my understanding is that if it was a use but a caveat to, you know, a certain, um, development standard associated with that use.
Yeah. You know, hours of operation too.
Right.
Because an urgent care can be open twenty-four hours.
Right, and that could be a nuisance. But I mean, like a dentist's office, for example, and actually like a medical office, that's what, pretty, pretty quiet.
Yes.
But again, nothing prevents a dentist's office from turning into something different too.
I don't know, when I'm at the dentist, I scream a lot.
I've heard.
But that is a good point where you look at similar facilities, not just the use, but development standards and operations that go along with that use that would get more like a daycare.
How big is this piece?
And that includes.
Two acres.
All the way up, so.
And then you're gonna be really tight by whatever you do that.
I think so, because you're probably looking at maybe an acre and a half when you net out.
If, if that, I think, I think it's like a nice section. When you exclude the panhandle.
Okay, and you're, I just have to ask, I know we're not in this, but there is a basin on both sides of the road there. Do you have access to discharge your stormwater into that basin or do you have to come to your own site?
I'm assuming at this point that it was designed for them, but I have none of the old documents, so if.
I didn't mean to get into that, I just thought while we're.
Once they come in, if, uh, if they come in with a site plan package, then we'll pull all the old files and verify that. But at this point, I'm, I'm, I have that assumption.
Wouldn't it be part of the PD? I mean, if it's part of the PD.
That's what I'm thinking.
I think it's a safe assumption.
Yeah, I would assume it is.
Yeah.
You have the ability to.
I'll be honest, I have no problem with an office. In my opinion. What do you think?
Are you thinking a one-story restriction then?
Sounds like that, that they're willing to do that, right? To keep it at a one-story, I mean, office, something quiet and.
I was thinking two would be great, just because that would give more space up, but you're looking into neighbors' houses now without really big trees back there and I don't know what they would take down, so you've got, it's a cherry lane, the very next one. So, I mean, you're right with residential.
Roundo.
Oh, roundo. Right, right, and residential, that's the only hard part, it would have to be one story.
But the footprint of the property is not going to allow this thing to be anything sprawling, huge, big.
No, you should get the parking.
Yeah, he's got parking, there's a lot of obstacles here.
I like a little more detail.
Yeah, that, that would be the best scenario is if they had really some specific point in.
Yeah, because you really don't know, yeah, you kind of need something to, to visualize there and make sure that what can even fit on there, because it is a really small first. So how big this building can be there, how much parking is required for that? I mean, I think that would help a little bit more for us to understand the, the, I mean, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, but we'd have to sort of tailor to our ordinance so we know what we're even talking about.
I mean, I don't want to send a mess to the planning commission. We're dealing with a twenty-year-old mess right now. It's just a few missing words that could have helped clarify this and it wasn't that they didn't want to help us, I just thought it could somehow, they thought they'd be a daycare center there twenty years ago, so, um, I don't want to kick that mess any further too, to your point.
Well, that, that was a big project, that whole area.
Yeah, it sure was.
And they brought, you remember, they brought the. From.
I was stone cold.
Milford. Are you just saying that I am?
No, I have a huge forehead, a hole I looked at.
We, we have a similar product in the south side of town and I call it the Onyx Building, but it's a medical building on two acres. It's a single-story and has four suites. It's where Dr. Donwell Dentistry is, um, Oxford Surgical, Oral Surgery, Bromstrom Fiscal Therapy and an insurance agent.
Oh, yeah, that's nice, that's a nice building.
That's, that's probably comparable to what you might be thinking about, um, in scale and size and, and use as well.
How big's the property, Mark, again?
Take away the panhandle, it's about maybe an acre and a quarter, acre and a half tops.
Yep, it did, I mean, wherever they put their.
And the Onyx Building has onsite, um, it's, it has a septic field as well, so that takes up some of their acreage.
What do you think? What do, what do we want to do here?
I'd like to see what they could put on that.
Have you done any plan just looking at the office, for example, and the setbacks? And just sort of even, any kind of building envelope, semi-disc or what?
We can leave the phone to these.
To incorporate, to, to take into consideration setbacks, parking, all that stuff, general rule of thumb is about ten thousand square feet per acre. So you had about, you know, an acre, an acre and a quarter, probably plus or minus ten thousand square feet.
Cause there's, there's a seventy-five foot front setback.
Yeah, so that's, so in this case, it might be, it may be smaller because.
Yeah.
But that's general.
Make it smaller.
So that would be.
So team's example is probably pretty close.
Approximately, yeah.
So, so if we send, if we send them back to do some type of design to, to kind of get an idea what it could look like, are we willing to make the change if we like what they come back with? I mean, they have to have some kind of a, you know, we can't just say, you know, we're not going to look, I mean, would, would we consider a different, would we consider office if they spend the time to go back and, and figure something out? I mean, we're going to consider that or just say no to it? They need some type of direction.
Do you have it on the?
Go ahead and put it up on there.
That's what we're trying, we're trying to do that, because I'm looking for it.
Can you send it up?
John, you're gonna be like John Madden with the pills for Crohn's, turkeys, turkeys at Thanksgiving and everything on that.
Well, it's nice if he has it up. Very nice. That'd be pretty nice.
Make sure you get the right pictures up there, no?
I know.
Basically, this particular one is made for three floors, but like it can be one floor. So what is an issue is like, uh, when you see the two buildings which I'm showing on the plot, it will be two buildings of one floor each. So the parking and other stuff. Basically like, uh, when we acquired this lot, it was like a.
Don't show me that. Don't show me that, that's three stories.
I was gonna say, that's a department building.
Same building, footprint is same, issue that like it is only one story.
Yes, just take that building and drop it down.
Do you know, what was the square footage of that building?
Dropping it down.
The footprint is by sixty-six thousand, six thousand, twelve thousand square foot.
Footprint.
So slightly larger, you're thinking maybe, Mark, if we're, we got the setback, I mean, roughly ten to twelve thousand, you'd guess?
And that is quite possible, like we did all the, uh, sticking it all like how it looks like.
Does it go to the next one?
Yeah.
Drugstore is usually about that.
Yeah, that's about.
It would be one story.
Interpretation, if other use would be, an office building would be consistent with other non-residential.
Just so we're using the right terminology, it's not other use, it's other facility in the PD agreement, so.
So that, excuse me.
All right, so we, we really have to make a decision here and move on. So what do you, what do you want to do here? What does this board want to do?
I think a doctor's office would, would well.
So on the office, you, you would have a problem with an office, some type of single-story office. Okay, anybody else have any?
I, I'd still prefer more of a, a use of, of a care, childcare, more children-related use. Um, not a big fan of the office, but I, it's not a make or break if the majority is thinking that, then.
Pediatrician?
Right, like a, well, yeah, see, there you go, then that, that seems to be, maybe that's kind of sitting in the middle.
I guess my question is.
The one story.
What's the difference between a medical office and a medical clinic? Cause we've mentioned office and then we've also mentioned a medical clinic. Patrick identified, you know, medical clinic might have hours from eight AM until nine or 10 PM. Is that just a, like an urgent care clinic or are we talking, you know, if we were to say, like a medical office, is that a distinction between a medical clinic?
That's a good question.
I think it is made that, that, say, I'm.
I think hours of operation could come into this as well as architecture. So if it's one story with pitched roof, so it looks, uh, residential and architecture are more residential, no flat roof, and had hours of operation that were more in keeping with like a professional office, so you, minister, you might have an accountant there.
Could have, yeah.
Someone told me that accounts.
An attorney, a collie, yes.
Slightly less boring than planners. It's very insulting, I'm very excited. Um, yeah, so I mean, something quiet like that, hours of operation would be important to detail though, I think. And that's why I was asking, can we send that along to the planning commission and they're bound by it? I mean, you're asking just for an interpretation, not for all of these other regulations.
Yeah, and I think, um, I mean, just without looking at the, the legal implications, I think it makes sense because if we look at a daycare, we typically think of a daycare as, okay, six or seven AM and then five or seven, then they're done. But if we're looking at another, uh, another facility, you know, could be some other use, but what we envision in terms of peak times and when it starts and when it ends, I think that that's relevant in terms of what goes back in, in terms of an interpretation for the use.
So an either or, so the other, the other. So an either-or, so the other, the other use, we're not using use, other facility could go with a caveat that it'd be a certain size, a certain number of stories and a certain range of hours in order to not have to be a childcare facility and still be in keeping with the intent of the PD.
Yeah, I think if it works with the PD, I think it'd be appropriate, and I think it'd be helpful for both the planning commission and the applicant to know exactly what, you know, to kind of flesh out what other facility needs, because daycares are typically one-story also.
So I don't want to delay this, but I'd also like to send you guys back to put some document together so we have something to send to the planning commission based on what, I mean, that's just my feeling. I don't, you know, and come back next month with something that says, in lieu of being a childcare facility, we propose that you find that this is a reasonable interpretation of an other facility. And we, one story, we talk about your proposed hours of operation, because as you stand here, I don't, in a year, if you come back and say, we need an extra half hour, I mean, think about it. I don't want to have you in five minutes make all these decisions that are going to affect your ability to market it, because we're just going to be back here again. I don't know what you think about that? I mean.
Well, I have no problem with that, Sean, as long as this board, if they bring everything back that you're asking them to bring back, we literally look at it and not say, well, I don't like that, I mean, we'd have to give them the opportunity.
It's really not their site.
Right, because it's the planning commission's job to get into the roof pitch and the brick color and, you know.
Suppose where it would fit on the property is what I'd be more interested in.
But we'd have to legitimately look at it and say, yes, if they brought back everything you've just asked for, then you would consider an office, is basically what you're saying.
I would, you know, a clinic leads me to believe it's got extended, it's going to be lots of activity there, and I don't, I don't like that. But a dentist office or an accounting office is something different. And it's, I don't know how you make that distinction, I think it's up to them to put that in writing and say, these types of uses, what we would consider would be another facility. And then they're presenting it to us. And then they're going to tell us what hours they're proposing. That's really, they've kind of heard our feedback, and I feel like they probably have a pretty good
Does everyone else agree with that? Does everyone agree with that?
For them to return with a more specific plan where, I would rather have that, and, you know, as Sean dealing with hours, and I'm definitely, as I said, definitely not in favor of a medical clinic, but if it were a dentist office, then that would be a different scope of hours and traffic patterns and that, and that type of thing.
Would you be willing to do something like that? Come back next month and give us an idea, and it to do, and you've kind of heard what everyone here is looking for?
And John, again, I don't want to delay, I just want to be clear in our communication to the planning commission as well, so there's no, there's no confusion later on.
One suggestion, you've heard that they will do that if you request, would it be possible to rule on the office building as a appropriate facility, subject to the, you know, height, the design, the hours of a typical daycare center? And then this way, we would get past tonight, we still get to the planning commission, maybe there is some direction in terms of what the, what the scope is.
See, I think that's legitimate. If they build it, if they use criteria of a childcare center.
As long as we don't have to put up the plate real
No, that has to be there too.
Give an underdog to the grand opening.
I mean, that's kind of a legitimate ask. It meets all the criteria of a childcare center, I mean, and then they're going to bring it back, right? I don't know.
You're going to bring it back here, or you want to take it directly to the planning commission? I'm a little confused. I'm just a little confused which way.
Preference.
It needs to come back here.
To the planning commission, if you, they've agreed that that's what
I think this board would like to see it again, and once you, once you leave here tonight on a motion, we don't see it anymore. And I think we, because of the, of what it is, I think they'd like to see it.
I'm confident that the, you know, the architecture's going to look, you know, very nice, it's going to be single-story, it's going to, you know, it's going to be very, very nice. So I'm confident, I think that you guys are proud of it as well, so we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, approval for a variance of engineer standards for detention pond, floodplain at the northeast corner of Eight Mile Road and Pontiac Trail for a childcare facility.
So if you'd like, I can give the introduction, the applicant's design engineer is here tonight?
Yep, go ahead and give us the introduction.
Well, the engineering design standards has a provision that specifically prohibits detention basins and floodplains. This has been the second request of this nature in the last few months. And I think the original intent of that statement was so that applicants didn't use the floodplain as their basin. What is before you tonight, the Atwell is designing a site, it was originally developed, it's part of the Kroger, it's the Lion, it's the, I forgot the name of it. It's at, oh, the Lion Town Center, this is and this is the northern outlot that's directly on Pontiac Trail. They had designed and constructed a detention basin, but the site was never developed. When we met with the applicant, probably several months ago now, it was noted that the pond was proposed with a plane. They have applied for a DEQ floodplain permit, they have received their draft permit, but they also are required to get a variance from the engineering design standards because of the statement that detention basins are prohibited. What they're proposing to do is to dig out a in the floodplain for their basin, so they're not proposing, that's what we call a compensating cut. So they're excavating more to accommodate their basin, they're not just filling in the floodplain that would cause damage downstream. Because of that, I'm in support of their variance. I do think the engineering design standards probably need to be reviewed to clarify that language because we're seeing this occurring more often on some sites that are more difficult. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Michael is in the audience as well, he's the design engineer with Atwell, representing the applicant.
Okay, any questions for Leslie? All right, we'll come on up and we'll pick you up.
Good evening, my name's Mike McPherson with Atwell, it's all three projects. Leslie gave you a really nice synopsis, this project has been through the site plan approval process, and this was one of the conditions that the planning commission placed on the project, was to obtain a variance from you folks for having detention pond and floodplain. Like Leslie said, this is a site that was developed in 1999, and this was an outlot of the Lion Town Center that ultimately nothing was ever developed on. But they did build a detention pond on this subject property that served two outlots, the subject outlot and additional the current Leos, that's right along Pontiac Trail there. And since 1999, floodplain maps have been updated, and long before floodplain was established in the area of that existing detention pond. Also, since 1999, the township's updated their detention standards, and they're a little more restrictive than they were back when the original development was done. So what we're proposing to do is essentially keep the detention pond in the same location, but enlarge it and deepen it a little bit to both account for the more strict township detention standards and also for the floodplain fill, the compensating cut that Leslie mentioned. So the footprint of the pond is actually not greatly changing from what it is today. It's just being reworked a little bit to allow development of the outlot. As I mentioned, we do have an MDQ permit in hand, draft permit, ready to go, ready to be finalized. Obviously, the developer's waiting to finalize the permit until we get the last couple items, which this variance would be one. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Here, it was required to be fenced.
It will be fenced.
Well, the pond won't be fenced, but their playground is fenced.
Playground will be fenced, that's correct. The pond slopes are per township standards.
They meet all of the other engineering standards, and the side slopes of the ponds, to your point, are very gradual in the engineering standards for that very reason that if a child walks in, they can walk out. So we don't approve steep ones that would actually require variance from you, if an applicant proposed, and we really don't have that request very often.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, you know, looking at this, the mapped 100-year floodplain out there is at elevation 919. Your expanded pond, the top of storage is below the 100-year floodplain. So my concern with this is if there is a storm event, whether it's even up to 100-year flood, you're not going to get any storage capacity with that basin whatsoever. And I know it's probably like that today, based on the elevations and the mapped floodplain. So, and actually, included in that flood zone is going to be the outdoor play area and also half the building footprint. And so, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm not comfortable with it, I guess.
Yeah, so to explain a little bit, so there's a couple of components to the floodplain, there's a map floodplain and there's actual floodplain. So this wasn't a floodplain area that was like an AE designation where the floodplain elevation, the base flood elevation had been previously determined per se. So the map floodplain and the actual floodplain are two different things. What's shown on the plan is the actual floodplain. They need to determine that, that's what MDQ has based their permit off of. Now, the building, the play area and everything will be raised such that it's outside the actual floodplain, and the permit has been issued for that. The basin itself will have excavated such that it has volume to accommodate the existing Leos, the subject site for detention purposes, and for compensating cut for raising that area on the site for the building and the play area. I guess to your point, when there is a 100-year event, yes, the floodplain, you know, 100-year floodplain will come into action, but the additional volume for the detention still remains, still remains there. So that volume is still there, and it's, you know, it's all, all that floodwater is integral at that point in time. So in that, you know, 1%, chance.
Right, I do see that, yeah, I've been looking at the fill, and you do have the fill on the outdoor play in the finished floor set above the floodplain, which is correct. I still have concern with the pond, though, is still, I mean, your high water mark is 919, which, or actually, 918.4, 917.
Yeah, so the only time that the, only time that the floodplain for the pond is going to come into play is when you do have the 100-year plus event, the 1% rainfall event. Otherwise, the pond will fall just as a typical detention pond. Once you have that flooding event, the creek that, the drain, that's the underhill drain that's adjacent to us would use that compensatory cut area, which is above and beyond the detention volume of the pond. The amount of water receded.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we've had, and I know John can attest to, we had several flooding incidents this past spring, and, you know, and I know this has come before us before on another project, and they were actually doing some future drain improvements, which was going to basically rectify that situation, so it would only be temporary. This case would be permanent, an issue, and I guess I'm not comfortable with it, but I'm only, I'm only one.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is that obviously we've gone through the engineering standards and typical requirements to make sure that what's being proposed is appropriate, and we've gone through the DEQ to get floodplain fill permits, including compensatory cut, and they agree that it's appropriate because they have issued a draft permit. So I, there's going to be no detriment or change to the way that the flooding or the available volume for flooding operates because of the proposed project.
Okay, any other questions?
If you were building a square foot building on this site and had the ability to enlarge the basin area, I mean, would this resolve some of the problem?
You mean if the building size was reduced by 4,000 square feet?
Yeah, I mean, pick a number, but if you reduce the building, therefore reducing the parking, you're reducing the runoff coefficient.
It's not, it's not going to change because the 100-year floodplain elevation is not going to change, and the the tension and storm or outlet elevation is obviously, no matter what, it's lower. Like if I just start to develop on the upland with all the floodplain area and I put underground detention in, it's still hydrologically connected to the drain. So it's still going to, it's going to act exactly the same way.
In a large flooding event, it will act in series. The whole basin will, like Michael mentioned, it will just add more volume to that area that can accept what they're proposing to do. And yes, if there is a large event, but the pond is sized for 100-year storm event also. So once it recedes, the drain recedes, then the pond would drain, that's how it would work in a large flooding event. They're connected, so water can come in and leave.
I was just wondering if the impact of this particular development was making this worse, driving this, so.
No, I think the site, because since the original detention basin was constructed before the flood was ever analyzed, the floodplain came, was discovered after the original development. So the only way, I guess unless you significantly reduce this outlot or didn't allow it, because the floodplain goes right through the middle of it. I don't know, I don't know how you could totally avoid this situation on this outlot.
Right, I mean, you're allowed to build in a floodplain, you develop an area in a floodplain, but you'd have to build obviously above that flood stage.
Yep, and that's part of the DEQ premise that's secured is the building.
One foot above flood stage.
It's actually a little bit, it's a little bit more than a foot above the 100-year. It's actually, we were conservative and made sure to place it enough that, you know, in the event of a giant storm per se, that the road elevation by, where the culvert is, is still lower than our building finished floors.
And what I'm trying to flesh out here is this is a problem whether they build on this or somebody builds half of this. So whether he's standing here or somebody else or some other use is standing here, we have this problem. Because that, I mean, to me, I'm not sure, I mean, it helps me wrap my head around it, but we either allow something to build that's going to require this, or we say nothing on this property, which is, you know, not going to be taken probably well by the person who owns and developed it and got it approved based on standards of, you know, whatever year it was approved exactly again?
99.
So how do you make an equitable?
When the, at the pre-application meeting, when we first looked at this, I mean, the first ask is, does the existing detention basin, is that acceptable? And my answer is absolutely not, it's completely undersized for our current standards. So to me, this is better because you're getting more volume to those floodwaters than you would if you just left it alone and built on it. This is a situation I think you're going to see, because of so many, you have so many county drains through the community, this, and, you know, the, as projects, I guess there are some sites, like this one is not the easiest size of this reason, you're going to see, I think, more of these.
Well, Leslie, I guess that's where I'm asking, if this is undersized and they have the ability to fix the problem, can't they, if they double the size of that basin, therefore reducing the number of square feet they can, or parking spaces they can fit on the site, wouldn't they be taking it, you know, they'd be addressing the volume issue. My concern is, so they're digging some of this out, but is it enough to, if they just dug it out, then it'd be better. But they're digging it out and they're putting a parking lot and a roof that's going to drain into it.
They're digging out that portion too.
What portion?
The part that they're filling. The part that they're filling, that's the compensating cut, they have to dig out that part, as well as have the volume for 100-year event for a pond. So there, it's that much more volume. So where they're filling for the play area, for example, in the permit for the DEQ, they have to excavate that much as well, and they have to excavate enough to meet your engineering standards for 100-year rain event.
But we're losing any capacity from a flood event, I guess, is from the drain backwashing and flooding in there.
No.
The data is all here. It's, you know, I mean, your floodplain's 919, you're storing under that level, you're going to get water coming from the drain into the pond before.
Oh, they will definitely, they'll connect, but they're, but they're adding that much more volume of storage to the floodplain that's connected, the pond and whatever they're filling.
I don't think the math works out, when I was looking at this earlier. And I, like I said, this is, this is also going to be a childcare facility, too, so I have that particular concern, and I know this isn't one of the drains that we're looking at as a township to try and to fix.
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, to Leslie's point, I mean, it may be hard to visualize on that, on that plan, but there's basically three components of volume that aren't going to be placed in the pond, there's detention volume for the Leos, which is demanding, there's detention volume for the subject outlot, which is brought up to current standards, township standards, so you're getting more detention than that exists, and there's compensating cut for the floodplain fill. So that pond in totality is 1,000 cubic feet of storage, which is a ton for one acre, a one acre outlot.
And what is it currently?
Probably something like, I don't know exactly, it's under 10.
So you're tripling the capacity of the basin?
Yeah, that's not all detention, though. Some of that is off the.
Right, the fill for like the playground area, for example.
Right.
Leslie, you've looked this over, and you're comfortable with it?
Yes, and I mean, it, you know, when I first looked at it, my first reaction was the same as Chris, like, no way, until I saw the numbers, reviewed the draft permit, and I'm comfortable with it, because they're, this is, this is the only way I would be comfortable with it, is that they're making up for what they're filling in, as well as the pond sizing that would be required, but yes, in a large rain event, that pond will be full, so will the drain. That's just how they work.
And it's, it's not uncommon in other communities for detention ponds to be placed in floodplains themselves. I mean, they just have to be engineered appropriately to work appropriately, which is what we feel we've accomplished.
Leslie, is there a problem with our engineering design standards?
Well, I, with this specific statement that they're prohibited in the floodplain, the alternative is you keep them prohibited, and any type of variance would continue to come to the board, or you allow them if they meet the DEQ criteria. It's odd, because they're allowed in wetlands if they meet DEQ criteria, but not floodplain. And often, it's the same thing.
Yeah, but the DEQ's given you a permit to put this in the floodplain.
Yes.
So you've met all the DEQ requirements, so we're being more stringent than the DEQ.
Yes.
Well, the DEQ permit would be the cut fill on the floodplain, they're just looking at land balancing.
They're looking at the floodplain permit. And the study as well, they had to perform a study on the drain.
So this meets the DEQ standards, but it does not meet our engineering design standards? And I guess that's, I don't, we've seen two of these in two months, I don't want to keep seeing them. I guess that's my thing, and I don't know if any more exist.
Well, I'd prefer not to be in the floodplain at all, I mean, it's just, with all the drainage complaints we get, it's, you know, we're just asking for more down the road, and I know.
I agree with you, but.
The young one around here, so it's, I'm going to be dealing with it in the future, but I'm still doing this stuff.
Because it is an existing condition, right? It's not something that we created, the pond exists in its current place, and the floodplain came after the pond was originally constructed, so, like Leslie said, I think getting a better scenario than what currently exists there.
Well, yeah.
And this is a county drain, this is a man-made drainage feature, this isn't like a natural scenic river that is flooded.
I guess I'm fleshing this out, because I read this, and I came in here having some real concerns about this, and thinking, why would we do this? But if you're making an existing basin that's already non-conforming, better, the air agrees with you, you know, and I don't fully understand all the calculations, the DEQ has given you, you know, approval to do this, and has evaluated it, and you're saying that the development itself isn't impacting this, so whether they build half of this, or all of this, which that's hard for me to wrap my head around.
Well, the pond volume would be smaller, so there'd be less basin in the floodplain. You know, if they're, if they're adding less building and parking, yes, your, the pond volume requirement shrinks.
And that's, I guess, what I'm saying, is, is the size and the impact of this driving a larger variance? Is it making it worse? I mean, because they've maximized every inch of this thing, and why could they not have asked for an 8,000 square foot building instead of a 10, and asked for, you know, eight less parking spaces, and had a play area that was a couple hundred square feet less, and tried to not have any more of the, you know, that's my concern, that's my hangup, is that they've filled wall-to-wall in here, and that's where I'm saying, they're not helping themselves out. We're just letting them off the hook, and they're not being asked to design around this to make it less of an impact. That's how I'm coming into this.
I think the, anything that would be here would require, if it were to be developed, would require a variance to this provision of the engineering design standards. I don't know how you could develop and not be in the floodplain with your pond.
Well, it's already there, and if they're going to develop, they have to add volume, no matter what it is, but the question becomes how much volume, so they've.
That's a function of the impervious surface, like you said.
So I'm back to being, I was at the beginning, which is thinking that the development's driving the size of this variance request.
But it's, the variance request isn't a size per se.
No, it's the same request.
To allow it in the floodplain. This is the, the engineering standard said, we state that, that the.
I'll read it.
Detention is not allowed in the floodplain.
It's very simple. Detention basins will not be permitted within a floodplain.
Why does he even hear that, if it's already there? Why are we even talking about this tonight, if the basin is already there?
The basin was there before they knew it was a floodplain.
Sure.
Before the drain was studied.
We touched the basin in order to develop the site, because the township's engineering standards have, or detention standards have changed, so there's more detention volume required to develop that site today than it was in 1999. So no matter what, we have to touch the existing basin, thus, that alone requires a variance to the engineering standards.
Does it?
If you have any part of your basin in the floodplain, it requires a variance, because of how the standards are written, which, that's one thing, I think there's some things that are out of date that need to be expanded upon in the engineering standards, I think this is one of them.
I don't know, if we start allowing detention ponds and floodplains, it's going to open up a lot more, it's going to open up problems, and it's going to open up a lot more, I don't know.
So let's, this is already here, though.
Let's say you did detention, which you don't want to do, because it costs a lot of money, you wouldn't have to get a variance from us.
Technically, it's hard, it's hard to say, because even if I put, let's just say, put the detention under the parking lot, it's still, no matter, it's still going to be hydrologically connected to the floodplain, so the floodplain on a 100-year event will back up into my underground detention under my parking lot, no matter what.
Right, but you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be in the floodplain, so let's say.
I think you probably wouldn't be with your basin.
So if you put it under your parking lot, and you, let's say, built a smaller building, so you could have more room and less filling and cutting and everything.
Yeah, I mean, this, per the, so essentially, if you look at the actual floodplain on the site, this, the outlot would be essentially not developable, it's just too small, short area. So, you know, I feel that we've gone through all the proper procedures and channels and calculations to ensure that, that there's no detrimental effect to the downstream floodplain or upstream floodplain in this manner, and that all the detention for township requirements are provided, DEQ, you know, we've, we've already gone through the whole DEQ process upfront, to make sure that we get that in hand before we even come forward to request this variance, to show, to show that, you know, we're meeting all the criteria. And this is a unique site, because the detention pond exists in the floodplain, it's not a new site, fully nothing developed there, and we're proposing to put a new detention pond in the floodplain, it currently exists there.
I won't keep talking about it, Mike.
I mean, we found a resolution doing it underground and just outletting to the, I mean, I know it's more expensive, but it would meet the ordinance requirements for engineering standards.
I don't want to deviate from the conversation that's on that end of the, of the table here, but I guess my concern is, we have township engineering design standard. Chris and Sean have identified a potential way of you avoiding requesting that, so why don't we just go that way?
Well, it simply wouldn't allow the development, this particular development would be, you know, not.
But the, but another, another development could make that work.
Unlikely on the site, I mean, I can't see that there isn't a development out there that might not make it work, but in my opinion, it'd be highly unlikely.
I just don't feel comfortable going against a design standard that, I mean, just keeps chipping away at, we have a design standard, or we have a development standard for ordinances, and it's just like, chip away, chip away, chip away, so.
Well, I guess I've understood that our design standards are all behind, is that true?
I think there's some things that need to be modified in them, yes. This is one that you've seen a couple of times, there's some other things that are, they haven't, I don't even remember the last time they came to you with an overhaul, but it's been a while. Like pipe types, that type of thing, they change over time.
Okay. I think you're handed a situation with a detention basin that's already in the floodplain, which we don't allow, and you figured out a way to try to fix it, and still developed a piece of property, which you have a right to do, okay? That being said, we have to make a determination, if we want to force his hand to put in an underground retention pond, it sounds like that would stop the project.
That would be up to.
Yeah, there's no way to, not to interrupt you, but there's no way to provide compensating cut per se in an underground detention system, so.
You have been to DEQ, the DEQ agrees that you can make this work, I'm comfortable with it, that's just me. I mean, are engineers comfortable with it? I'm comfortable with it. So I think, that being said, we need to make a motion one way or the other, and move this thing on. We, someone will want to carve a motion out, one way or the other.
Go ahead, Chris.
All right. I'll make a motion to deny a variance of engineering standards for the detention pond within the floodplain at the northeast corner of Eight Mile and Pontiac Trail for a childcare facility, because the applicant has not expressed sufficient evidence that the detention cannot be achieved elsewhere, as discussed underground detention system.
Support.
All right, we have a motion, a motion to deny and a support, and I would like to call this one by roll.
Sean O'Neill?
Yes.
Lisa Blais?
Yes.
Christopher O'Neill?
Yes.
John Hicks?
No.
John Dolan?
No.
Dresha Karcon?
Yes.
Michelle Cash?
No.
Okay, denied. All right, moving on to H. The moratorium on the 11th billboard sign, you want to mention anything about that? We have a resolution on this, so we all understand what it is, so.
I'll make a motion to, you can adopt this, there's not two ratings, right?
No, it's just a resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-09, moratorium on the issuance of or permits for off-premises advertising signs.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Motion to adjourn?
Close, in favor say aye.
Aye.